Let's call to order, please, the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena City College. Roll call, please, Ms. Thompson.
Excuse me. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Bowe?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Fellow?
Here.
Dr. Mann?
Present.
Ms. Wa?
Present.
Mr. Pack?
Here.
Is there anyone who wishes to address the Board on any of the closed agenda items? Any public comment on any of those items? Okay. First I have from Glenna Waterson.
Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Glenna Waterson and I am speaking to you tonight under the guise of past President of Issue. During the four years I was President, I was visited numerous times by many staff members from a particular area. They came to me with serious issues concerning their manager. They were issues of harassment, mostly of a sexual nature. I will spare you from the horrific details, but I will tell you that no PCC employee, classified or otherwise, should be subjected to such treatment, often on a daily basis. This was a well-known problem in the area. In fact, so many people on campus knew there was a problem, it was almost a joke, only it wasn't very funny. This manager's harassment was a catalyst for so many people quitting, retiring early, transferring out to other areas, or just plain getting fired. It shouldn't have taken HR or the VP so long to realize and address this problem. I believe that this manager's intimidating ways was key to employees not wanting to come forward with a formal grievance. Issue was finally able to convince a portion of the affected employees to band together and file a formal grievance. When the investigation began and the improprieties started coming to light, the district could see that this was indeed a serious matter. So measures were taken on the part of the district to distance this person from the employees. One cannot help but think, should a classified member have acted so illegally towards their coworkers or other employees, swift action would have been taken to protect those being targeted. Not so in this area. These employees, many of them here for decades with wonderful work ethics and reputations, had to tolerate the intolerable for years. The district is still fussing around this. There's been no closure or resolution for the employees who, I am telling you, have been traumatized by the events over the past few years. Just the fact that this person is no longer on campus is not enough. Our understanding is this manager will now be offered the retirement incentive. A year off with full pay and retirement incentive? Nothing punitive at all? That sends a message of "we don't care about you" to the employees. What a sad state of affairs. I am sorely disappointed in the management of this situation by the district, and this is a district that I've loved and been loyal to for 35 years. Do your job.
Okay, the next is Annemae Jones.
Thank you, President Thompson, Board members. Dr. Rocha, my name is Annemae Jones. I am the Secretary in College at Vansum and I'm also the current President of Issue. I have some written remarks I'd like to read at this time. It is with a heavy heart that I am compelled to stand before you this evening and ask for your assistance in bringing a very troubling matter involving allegations of sexual harassment to a resolution which not only recognizes the gravity of the situation, but also the enormity of the harm our unit members have suffered. Last evening, after absolutely no communication from District Council on this matter since April 3, Issue's Council received two emails in the span of six hours. Tonight I want to focus my remarks on the second of these emails. First, District Council stated, quote, "The complainants received an administrative determination on March 10 and did not appeal from it." That statement is false. On March 16, in the absence of both administrative support personnel in the President's office, I hand-delivered to Dr. Van Pelt's administrative assistant letters of appeal from each of the affected Issue unit members. They were time stamped with a copy returned to me. Thereafter, I personally saw them placed in a file of pending matters which I was informed would subsequently be given to staff in the President's office. I hope you will concur with me that there should be no question whether our unit members' appeals were timely received by the district. Second, District Council went on to state, quote, "The complainants have received all the relief they ever sought. In fact, the complainants, as opposed to the Issue leadership, appear to be quite satisfied," end quote. Counsel, I want to ask you, whom did you speak to in order to arrive at that conclusion? I think I can safely say the answer is not any of our aggrieved unit members. This afternoon, I personally spoke with six of the seven grievance one is out of the office and can inform you with no equivocation that to a person they are not satisfied with the district's response. The egregious and unlawful behavior at Issue herein was suffered by our Issue unit members for several years before last summer. During that same preceding timeframe, multiple attempts asking for the district's intervention to compel a cessation in the unlawful behavior were also made. For various reasons, each of these cries for help were ignored or disregarded by the district. It was only after all of our unit members, with the guidance of my predecessor as Issue President, Glenna Waterson, they courageously banded together and as a collective group simultaneously filed their grievances, that the district finally realized that perhaps there was credence to the complaints and began a course of purported corrective action that remains unfinished to this day. To know that the alleged perpetrator has continued to be fully paid for the past 11 months does not, I can assure you, bring comfort or closure, or to use District Council's choice of word, satisfaction, to our unit members. As the duly elected president of this bargaining unit, I take particular exception to District Council's intimation that the Issue leadership is the only dissatisfied party. Despite that suggestion, I and my colleagues on the Issue Board remain firm in our resolve and distinctly undeterred in vigorously representing and protecting our members at every opportunity. Issue considers this matter to be one of the most important it has faced in its 20-year history of existence. Thus, Board of Trustee members, I now stand before you as Issue President and respectfully, but with all due urgency, ask that you direct the administration and your legal counsel to forthwith bring this matter to a conclusion which acknowledges and fully respects the Issue bargaining unit, as well as the enormous harm suffered by our affected unit members. Thank you.
Anyone else to address the Board on the closed session items? Ms. Dowell, would you have a response?
Not in public session, thank you.
Then, no one else appearing. We will adjourn to closed session to have addressed Government Code Section 549-56.9B1, Conference Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation, one case; Government Code Section 549-57, Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, five employees; Government Code Section 549-57.6, Collective Bargaining, PCCFA, CSEA 777, ISSU, POA, Designated Negotiator, Mr. Engeldinger; Government Code Section 549-57.6, Negotiation with Unrepresented Employees, Confidential Management Association, Again the Designated Negotiator, Mr. Engeldinger. And we shall return after the closed session at 6:00. The Board is back in open session. There is no reportable action from the closed session, so we will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Douglas, would you lead that list up, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The meeting number eight, the Joint Meeting of the Associated Students on April 6, 2011. Also, number nine, the study session in Temple City, April 20, 2011. And meeting number 10, Joint Meeting with the Pasadena Divide School District on May the 3 of this year. Other questions, corrections, comments about Mr. Pack?
Just one change to the April 6 minutes. On page three, under Item E number one, the Vice President for Public Relations, her name is listed as Chelsea Pack, it's actually Cheslea, C-H-E-S-L-E-A, Pack.
Okay. Other corrections? Questions or comments? Dr. Mann?
I think the... Just a second. I wasn't seeing... Where's the joint meeting with the school board? You say those minutes were here?
Yeah.
I didn't see the minutes either. I was going to raise the same point, there's the agendas there, but...
It's right here.
Where?
It's the fourth page, and it says called to order. The meeting was called to order at 6:12 PM by Renata Cooper.
The fourth page?
At the back. So go to the very back.
Okay.
Oh, I see, okay.
And it says meeting number 10.
Oh.
Okay.
Who prepared the minutes?
You did?
Okay. A little different format.
I still have the same comment. I think since Dr. Rosser was there and stayed through the whole meeting and did make a comment, that we might want to make a comment on that.
We should add that to the agenda.
I would like to make that as a, maybe under audience participation, Dr. Jim Rosser, President of Cal State LA, commented very favorably on the 2+2 program and pledged his support to making sure the students had the programs for the final two years, something to that effect.
Any objection to adding that to the minutes? Okay. Other comments, questions, or a motion to approve? All three sense?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And moved and seconded to approve the minutes of all three meetings. All student advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All closed. Okay, motion carries. Now back to introduction of guests. Are there any guests to be introduced?
I think we're all covered.
Okay. Announcements and recognitions, Board of Trustees. Any comments?
No.
Mr. Bowe?
Just a couple of quick ones. First off, in the community, both Trustee Brown and I attended the annual celebration for the program out of Muir High School, the mentoring program for youth development, and it was a community-wide celebration of the work that is being done to support young men in our district, and I was proud to be a part of that. I also want to thank Dr. Rocha for joining me Monday night at a community meeting in La Cañada for the La Cañada Republican Committee to talk about Pasadena City College and the service that PCC is providing the community. We also signed up a few high school and college students to attend PCC this summer and in the fall. Finally, we had a Community Colleges Board of Governors meeting last Monday. It was an extensive agenda, and Dr. Mann was up in Sacramento to represent the Community College League. We, it was... There was a lot of discussion about legislation that we'll get into later, but there's a movement to provide districts some flexibility with rates for credit courses. Bill's going through the legislature on that. We have not taken a position on that, but it's about extension programs or continuing ed programs, being able to charge market rates for credit courses. And we're listening to feedback on what we should do about that. And obviously, the other big issue that we have to think about is the budget and the government. Governor past Presidents may revise on how the system-wide we're going to handle that. And I know we're getting a presentation on that for PCC specifically later, but if anybody has any questions about what happened at the Board of Governors meeting, happy to share.
Other, Ms. Wa?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that Trustee Brown and I had a chance to attend the Latino and the Black Scholarship Breakfast, and it was really great to hear the awardees and their stories. The other thing is, I had a chance earlier this week to attend or to see the, I guess, visit the vocational ed construction program under Rich Wheeler, and that was really great. And I think that it gives us a... It was really great to see not only there are women in the program, which I thought was great, but it gives us an opportunity, I think, when we look at how we focus our students on what's available in the industry, but also the integration of what we have in academics such as architecture, engineering, CAD into that program. So, great program.
Dr. Fellow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention that I was very impressed with the PCC Foundation reception last Friday and the instructors, that teachers, professors who won grants, and that was attended by the President Thompson and Trustees Wa and Brown and myself. And I think Dr. Sugimori did a very good job, and certainly with your leadership, we were able to give these grants to these deserving faculty. Thank you.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I am on the Student Success Task Force, and we met at the same, actually, the same day of the second day of the Board of Governors meeting. And one of the things that was discussed, the Board of Governors at our first reading, was reducing the number of times a student could repeat a course.
Yes.
And one of the things that the Student Success Task Force is looking at is these very issues of reducing the number of times students can pass a course, requiring students to go to orientation. There is a, 20 colleges called the Golden Triangle, pardon me, 20 states called the Golden Triangle, all of whom have very high completion rates in community college students. And they, we were given an analysis of what characteristics they all share in common, and that was one of them. So there's about 20 characteristics of the Golden Triangle. California, as a community, you know, as a state, is so far away from any of them that we would never make the Golden Triangle, but individual campuses could look at some of these things.
Other comments? The, I'm sorry.
I forgot, the one thing I wanted to add is that PCC is the talk of Sacramento right now, because this was on the heels of our gift announcement, and everybody in the system-wide is taking notice of that and excited for Pasadena City College and what it means for the system to see such major philanthropic focus on community colleges. And also, there's a lot of buzz about all the positions we have open.
Yes.
And some people inquiring about if they can apply for jobs at Pasadena City College. They're very excited about that.
Of course, you said yes.
Absolutely.
Anybody can apply.
I just wanted, in the May-June 2011 issue of the Pasadena Arts Council Folio, there is a recognition of Dean Alex Chrisellis and also a person named Joey Forsyte, a filmmaker. And they have received an award, proposed Picasso's Dilemma Public Art Installation, and quite a nice article about Dean Chrisellis and Ms. Forsyte. And so I encourage all of you to read that, and we should make sure that he receives appropriate recognition from us and everything. Mr. President Rocha?
Thank you, President Thompson. I just have, you know, a couple of quick ones before I go on to the three that are listed there. There are two really significant events that had to do with raising money for scholarships besides the Westerbeck. Last Thursday was, and I see Dean Olivo here, had a wonderful, the President's Latino Advisory Group sponsors the Latino Scholarship Awards, and we had a wonderful event there, gave out, how many scholarships did we give out?
$12,000.
$12,000 scholarships. And so, the, I really want to thank Cynthia and all the wonderful people who are on the Latino Advisory Committee that make that possible. And then this morning, wanted to thank Trustee Wa and Trustee Brown. We had a wonderful event by the Association of Black Employees and their annual scholarship breakfast, although it was starting to get to be a scholarship lunch. And again, I say, I don't have the program in front of me, but we awarded about 15 scholarships to both CEC and workforce and regular transfer students, and it was a wonderful event. And again, I want to thank the President's African-American Advisory Committee for, and the Tabe, the Association of Black Employees, for making that possible. It was a great event, great speakers. Let me move on, if I may, to three recognitions I wanted to briefly call out, and I'll ask Vice President Van Pelt to explain these two sustainability awards we recently won.
Thank you. Last week, we were notified that the California Higher Education Sustainability Conference, which will be held in July, PCC is going to receive two best practice awards. The first one is in Innovation Waste Reduction, which is basically our recycling program and diversion from landfill. And the other winners in that category were UC Davis and CSU Chico. And the second award is for the Campus and Community Partnership Award, which will be highlighted in the Social Equity tract, and that deals with the I-PASS program of providing alternative transportation through social equity. The third one, actually, is that while we didn't win the award for water conservation, they do want us to do a presentation because our efforts are still leading the field, and so we'll be doing three presentations at the Cal State Long Beach Campus, July 10 through the 14th.
And we won in two categories, and this included not just community colleges, but the other public colleges.
They awarded in each category to the University of California, to CSU, and to a community college.
All right. Great. Congratulations, Rick, and thank you to all the staff, students, who have been working on the sustainability goal for the campus. And, okay, let's see, we had some great fashion students that we wanted to shout out to, let me see. It's our fashion award, come on.
They're not here.
Oh, okay.
They thought the meeting started at 7:00.
Yeah, they thought it was 7:00.
Okay, well, we'll dovetail them then, but I do see our architecture people. So come on up and, if you would, just briefly tell the Board the great, great program, the great awards our architecture students won this past weekend.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here to speak with you. We had a kind of a rather large...
First of all, tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Coleman Griffith. I'm the Coordinator of the Architecture Department at Pasadena City College, and this is Gabriella Coleman Aris. Gabriella is the recipient of a second-place scholarship award by the American Institute of Architects. She was in a juried competition by architects in Los Angeles who awarded her this place. Her field of competition were university students and graduate students in architecture. She competed against fifth-year professional degree program students and graduate students. The first place went to two students who were with a master's project from UCLA. Gabriella, from Architecture 20B at Pasadena City College, came in second. This is not the first time this has happened, so this is not just luck. This is the second year, the second time in two years, and to be honest with you, I think we should have won last year as well. This is Gabriella's board. The project that was submitted this year by Gabriella is what we call Places of Performance. It is a, it was a project, a hypothetical project, that proposes the introduction of performance spaces, chamber music performance spaces within the Los Angeles Grand Central Market. The idea, the challenge that I gave my students in the second year, was to reinvent the relationship between the orchestra and the community. And so, by doing, by having this particular sort of scheme at the market, they were able to sort of juxtapose two very sort of unlikely activities, but in a way that provoked a rather interesting synergy between the two programs. So I'd like to turn this over to Gabriella for a moment, and maybe she can talk about it.
Hi, I'm Gabriella. So basically, the whole process started really simply by promoting classical music into the community, especially in downtown LA. And it was a beautiful experience. And the whole exhibition, it was, I mean, definitely a prestigious exhibition, and I was so glad that I was part of it in the first place, but I was even more excited when I got to second place. So, yeah, the whole process, it was unbelievable. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriella's success will continue. She has a scholarship to go to Woodbury University, where her, the remaining three years of her education for her professional degree in architecture will be, half of that will be paid for by this scholarship.
That's great.
So of her total expense, which is a significant sum today. So we're very proud of her and honored to be here before you to talk about this, because, you know, this is what we were trying to do.
Yeah.
Help to contribute to the success of what makes a global community college. It's the efforts of these students that will project beyond our borders to other places and so forth. So thank you very much.
Mr. Bowe?
I have a question for Gabriella. Did you come to PCC with the goal to study architecture? How did that come about?
I did have in mind, architecture was always been in the back of my head. I did take graphic design and engineering classes as well, and it wasn't until I took the first class of Introduction of Architecture when I decided, okay, yeah, this is what I want to do. And I knew from the beginning that Pasadena City College is so popular with their architecture design program. It's supposed to be one of the best in LA, or even in California. So, and this is one of the reasons why I came over here, because everybody talks about it all the time, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Did you receive any inspiration from your work from the common areas of our parking structures where we play costumes?
Yeah, it was all about that.
You just made my day.
Already a professional diplomat.
Thank you.
Shows what a great educational experience you've had at Pasadena City College.
That's right.
Great, well, congratulations to you, and thank you very much for what's a wonderful contribution, so we really appreciate that. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
In closing, this is an example of, this for PCC is a common example. It is, Gabriella is exceptional, but we have many exceptional students with exceptional outcomes. It's one of the reasons why we say that excellence is an equity issue. We're one of the few community colleges left that has retained this. And I remember the first day I walked into Coleman's class, he invited me into his class, and Coleman is, leads a group of faculty that you see their work and you see their students working together. It's absolutely at the state of the art, and we're very, very proud and grateful, and congratulations, so.
Okay, we are at the point of shared governance, reports?
Your fashion people are here.
Oh, fashion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, very good.
Right on cue.
Fashion Symposium Awards.
You are, we are so delighted to have you, so that you can tell us about this great, great award.
Excellent. My name is Sunny Cannon. I am the newest faculty in the Fashion Design Department here at PCC, and I wanted to tell you about some really exciting news that we've had lately. On April 16, at the California Market Center down in downtown LA, the California Community Colleges Family and Consumer Sciences Organization hosted a fashion symposium where students from across the state gathered to meet industry professionals to learn about combining their talents and creativity with sustainable fashion practices. So at this symposium, our students at PCC had the opportunity to compete statewide against 37 other community colleges that offer fashion programs. There were more than 100 semifinalist garments that were showcased in a... There were more than 100 semifinalists garments that were showcased in a fashion show that was the capstone of this symposium. They, it was the culmination of this gigantic event. So I'm really happy to announce that four of our students were chosen as semifinalists, and not only that, but we won a Best in Show, we won a first place, a second place, and an honorable mention. So I'd like to introduce them to you now, because we just, we're so excited, and we absolutely want to show them off to you. Okay, so Lawrence Wu, right here. Where's your models? Come on. Okay, so Lawrence won an honorable mention in the sportswear category for his lace shorts.
Come do a catwalk for us.
These are all student models, and they didn't know they'd be walking, so. So he won an honorable mention for this lace short and sweatshirt ensemble. He won, okay, sorry, he'll be completing his fashion design certificate this fall, and he plans on transferring to Woodbury. He had a wonderful internship opportunity last year, and they loved him so much, they hired him the second his internship was over. So he's now not an intern, but he's an associate designer at a great big juniors company, and some of his designs are going to be shown to a store called BB this week. So we're pulling for him to get his designs actually in a store. Next up, Nancy Kwan. Nancy won second place for her convertible trench coat. Where are you, trench coat? She won second place for her convertible trench coat dress in the sportswear category. She also had some other honorable mention dresses. Come on, take the walk. She won $200 and some online classes. Nancy will be earning her fashionist certificate this fall. She already has a BA in Communications from UC San Diego, and she was working at L.A. Unified as a supplies buyer, I guess, when the layoffs hit. So she decided to just take a totally different career path, and she said that since changing her goals, she has never felt more purposeful and fulfilled. Okay, Exel. There's Exel. She was a semifinalist in both the sportswear and project redesign category. She ended up winning first place for her redesign project, and this dress was actually repurposed out of several men's basic dress shirts, which is just really exciting. She won $250 and a professional dress form, and some online classes as well. Exel is shooting for the stars, and she's planning on finishing next fall with not one, but all of our certificates that we're offering. She has a BA in Fine Arts already, but when she had the opportunity for several freelance jobs, she knew she needed some more design experience, and so she decided to come to PCC. Not only does she create the designs by drawing them and creating line sheets, but she's also doing some freelance for other people recreating things. Her most recent project is trying to remake a wedding dress that somebody chopped up when she got mad at her husband. She's got her hands full. So on top of her amazing work as a student at PCC, she also runs a local fine arts school called Art Lyceum. So we are really excited and happy to have her with us. Okay, last but not least, Nancy Dip. She won Best in Show and $500 for her presentation boards. There were several presentation board categories. People had to research historical and cultural design influences, and costume history, and quality comparison in design, but hers was best out of all of them. So she got a special award for her design presentation boards. So she not only made the clothes, photographed them, illustrated them, did technical design specifications, and definitely deserved her Best in Show award. So we're super proud of her. I would just like just to say how excited I am for these students, and I wanted to congratulate them and ask you to join us in congratulating them. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope that when you're shopping someday, you'll see their beautiful work, and hopefully you'll be buying it, too. So thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Very well done. Shared governance reports now, I believe. Ms. Hammond?
AS elections are underway right now until midnight tonight, and so as of Friday, you should know who the incoming executive board will be, but you'll hear about them at the next meeting.
Okay. Ms. Albright?
Yesterday was Classified Day. I would like to thank Dr. Rocha for doing his little numbers that he did in the morning session and in the afternoon session. I also would like to thank the Academic Senate and Human Resources for giving of their, we had giveaways, and the Academic Senate and HR were just absolutely wonderful and donating. I also want to thank Dr. Douglas and Lynn Wright for their contribu, they contributed to the leadership speaker, which was Peter Paris, oh, I'm sorry, Garnon, from the Paris Group. And it was very well received. All classified that joined, we had, I think, a total of 97, 47 in the morning and the rest in the afternoon. We had yoga session, and it was very well received. I think it was the first classified Senate, Classified Day, that was, had nothing but positive. There was hardly any negativity whatsoever. It was very well received. June 1st also is the general session for the classified, where we will be giving out a student scholarship, and also a classified scholarship for the employees that are continuing their education, and our elections are also coming up for June 1st.
Good, thank you. Ms. Martinez?
You have a copy of the Senate nanoseconds in front of you, so I just wanted to point out a few items. The very first one, we have some good news coming to you soon. We are on the verge of approving a distance education policy. This has been in the works for a couple of years now, but we want to make sure that all of the various constituencies have had their input, and that the issues have been aired, and that we have a good, viable document to present to you very soon. The other item that I want to mention are the SASI Innovation Awards, the Student Access and Student Initiative Innovation Awards. We had a presentation by Lynn Wright this past week, just announcing to the faculty the nature of the various awards that have been made and the amounts. And just to give you, you may be receiving more information about this later, but just to give you sort of a, an overview, there was an award to Solomon Davila and Deborah Bird from Engineering and Architecture on Design Technology Pathway, a Pre-Health Sciences Pathway led by Paul Jarrell and Katie Rodriguez, a Lecture Capture Technology led by Leslie Terapelli, related to distance education, and a number of other mini-grant awards that were announced by Lynn Wright. And she, as the Chair of the Senate's Professional Development Committee, will coordinate the dissemination of information about these projects to make sure that this is indeed, that there is indeed ongoing innovation, and that faculty have the opportunity to share their ideas and engage in innovation. And then the third thing that I want to bring to your attention, you have a copy of this announcement also. Tomorrow, we have the annual Faculty Lecturer Performance Award, a presentation by Dr. Tuk Tuk Thong Ti Raj, an Associate Professor of English. She will be talking about pop culture in the classroom under the title Gaga, Garnet, and Gucci in the Classroom. So I'll have to find out what that's about tomorrow. But you're invited at 12:00 noon in C-333, and the reception following in C-217.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas?
I'd just like to remind everyone, we're going to have our annual retirement breakfast on June 16th at 7:00 a.m. at Brookside, and I'd like to invite any of the board members who'd like to come. We expect a good turnout this year, so.
Ms. Colros?
No report.
Mr. Miller? Just to echo a little bit of what President Martinez said, and at the next board meeting, we'll have a full report on the SASI allocations and the funding. Tonight's agenda was very full, so we decided to put it off to the June 1st meeting. Mr. Pack?
No reports.
Ms. Chapman?
Thank you, no report this evening.
Mr. Engeldinger?
No report.
Dr. Sugimoto?
And just to thank the board members who attended the Academic Excellence Mini-Grants and Grants Reception, really appreciate your presence and the congratulations to the faculty. I also wanted to recognize Shirley Burt, who's in the audience, and is one of our stalwart Foundation Board members and is always present, so thank you, Shirley, for being here.
Mr. Wil, or Dr. Wilcox?
Just two items, just to let you know that tomorrow evening is the Spring General Scholarship Awards Dinner, and the following evening is the Flea Market Scholarship Awards Dinner.
Where will those be held?
Right here.
Dr. Van Pelt?
No report.
Okay, I guess we are at the point of public comment on non-agenda items. We have requests to speak from, first Nicholas Smith.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Smith. As Edward Martinez kind of pointed out, this past Monday, one of the topics that was discussed at the Academic Senate was time, place, and manner. It's on the nanoseconds, I believe. But it went to discussion to the entire board, and in that discussion, it was brought up that there is some confusion over the original document that was, that this, that this piece of litigation has been, being debated over, I guess. I guess it was, some people think that it's a mandate by a court, other people say that it's not a mandate. After everything was discussed, and it was decided to once again take a look at time, place, and manner, I approached Edward Martinez after the meeting, and I asked him if it was possible, if I could get a copy of this document. He said that he wasn't able to provide it for me, but he did say that possibly the Board of Trustees was able to get it for me. So I'm here tonight to officially request a copy of the document under the California Public Records Act.
By a document, you mean what?
Well, it's unsure. No one really knows what it is. Some people say that it was a court order, some people say that it wasn't.
We can, when we turn to counsel, I appreciate your comment. Maybe general counsel can be helpful, because we, counsel has perhaps some context that would be helpful here. Because there has been this issue that you raised about court order, no court order.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think counsel, counsel might be able to help us out here.
I want to try to be as succinct as possible, Mr. Thompson, members of the board, Dr. Rocha, members of the audience. First of all, to my knowledge, there has never been a court order issued that required the Board of Trustees or the college to revise its time, place, and manner regulations. I think that misconception arose because a number of years ago, in response to some complaints that were raised by students and staff, an investigation occurred which led to some recommendations being forwarded to the Board of Trustees by a retired Superior Court Judge, who at that time and still is a professional mediator and alternative dispute resolution expert. And one of the recommendations that he made to the board was that they revisit and update their time, place, and manner regulations. But because he is a retired judge, he was referred to quite often as the judge, and I think that's how the misconception arose, that there was some kind of judicial order.
Would it be possible for myself to get a copy of that recommendation, then?
I am honestly not sure that there's a written recommendation that could be produced, but I do know that he made that recommendation to the board. If there's, if there's a disclosable document in existence still that can be produced, then we can look for it and look at that. It may well be that there is not, but we can look for that.
Well, we must have something, though, that goes back and disclosed.
There'll be some record in the board's records, for sure.
Yes, and I think that's what he would like to have, and I think we certainly should provide it to him.
If nothing else, we'll be able to find something in the board's minutes.
Can you take about two minutes, give us the background of this? How do we get a mediator involved, and what led to this?
Well, there, there may be people in the room who can tell the story better than I can, but to the best of my recollection, and there, there will be a few board members still, I think, who, who will recall it. And at the time that the Iraq War began, there were some protests and demonstrations on campus, and they spilled into the administration building from the areas outside, where a great many people were, were engaged in expressive activity in opposition to the war. Once this got into the interior of the building, the campus police became involved, and there were later allegations of misconduct by the police. And it was in the course of doing investigations of those allegations of misconduct by the police, which were personnel investigations, they were protected, the, the police were all provided with the protections under the Peace Officers Bill of Rights, and they were very carefully done. But the, the judge was asked to review the results of that personnel investigation in order to assure that there was a very neutral individual involved in it. And so it was in the course of then reporting back to the board after that personnel investigation that these recommendations were made.
Mr. Baum, you were, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, in just, in my understanding, then, because the police allegedly conducted, or were misconducting themselves, the students were then therefore, or the campus was therefore then decided that they needed to have stronger time, place, and manner?
The recommendation was that there be clearer time, place, and manner regulations, yes. And I, I know that Mr. Martin and Dr. Mann were on the board at the time.
I think you did a great job of summing it up. I think in the context of the, there were several subsets of this. One is when the riots moved indoors, and you had students in classrooms.
I know the history, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I thought you were asking for the history.
No, I, no.
So the point I was trying to make is that I think the judge was saying you needed time, place, and manner, so there was a way to express, for people to express themselves so that other students still felt safe.
Yeah.
And I think that in part was the impetus behind it, to carefully balance both the academic expression with academic safety.
All right. Well, I would still like to see the original recommendation.
But if we, I mean, at this point, I can't say for certain what disclosable documents there may be that we could produce, but we certainly can.
Well, there has to be something that has the recommendations, invited a piece of paper, and we'll get that to you, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next request we have is from Ahmad Kazfy, K-A-S-F-Y. I apologize for not pronouncing your name correctly.
Hello, it's pronounced Ahmad Kazfy.
Ahmad Kazfy, okay, thank you.
All right. I come to speak to you this evening in order to inform you about a cruel brand of injustice that is developing on campus. Yesterday, at about 4:00, an anonymous individual torched the Holy Quran and threw it off the R Building here on campus. I was on the other side of the R Building when this event took place, and it did not, and I did not see the burning of the Holy Quran with my own eyes, but I saw where campus police put out the burning book as students gathered discussing the event. A week ago today, in the early morning, I personally found a partially burned holy, a copy of the Holy Quran in between the walkway of the C and R Building. These events continue to reoccur. These events are a cause for concern for the Arab and Muslim communities on campus, but not limiting to even the extent to other minority groups. This act of intolerance cannot be ignored and shunned away. It must be fought and understood in order to prevent further intolerance among religious, cultural, or sexual differences that seem to separate us. I come to you as an Arab-American, born in Beirut, Lebanon, and a product of Pasadena City College. I am transferring to the University of California at Berkeley. Pasadena has cultivated me into an academic and well-rounded individual, and I am truly thankful, and will certainly miss the three years I've had here at PCC. But to get back to my point, there is a lot of diversity among PCC students, and there are various events throughout the year that relate and acknowledge the adversities being faced within those various minority communities, whether it's Latino, Black, or Asian. However, personally, I am deeply saddened that throughout my years here at PCC, not one event has taken place in regards to understanding the Arab-American or Muslim community that could have provided for contemporary education- educational case to combat this type of discrimination and intolerance. I understand that there is not as much Arab or Muslim students as the aforementioned minority groups, but I still, but it should still be discussed and examined. There is injustice within all communities, and I believe 9/11 truly changed our lives. Today, there are many words of hate and misconceptions within our TV stations, radio stations, and politics that, within our day-to-day lives. There is, this is a current issue facing our country and nation, and this brand of discrimination is relevant to today. Therefore, I believe that this institution of education has a duty in educating its students on these misconceptions by acknowledging the adversities currently being faced by the Muslim or Arab American community, and continuing to battle against all forms of intolerance or hate through understanding and love.
Dr. Rocha, do we have any report on this that you could share with us?
Yes, we take it very seriously. I received a report today from Dean Scott Thayer that this occurred, and we have launched a criminal investigation and are leaving no stone unturned to see if we can find the individual responsible for it. And then I completely agree with your feelings and the sentiment that we do, we'll need to create some opportunities in the very short-term future to educate the community about these issues. I'm deeply disturbed by it, and it's just simply not acceptable. Scott, is that, is there any other information that you have on this?
Can you come up to the microphone, please, Scott?
Yes, Carrie Afusah in my office, she was the Cross Cultural Center Coordinator, is working with our, some of our student leaders to put together a teach-in, maybe an interfaith breakfast event to publicize and get the dialogue started so that we won't have this type of intolerance on campus. Once we receive the report, we try to get a group together as quickly as possible, and so we're working on that right now.
Are there questions, Mr. Thayer or Dr. Rocha, Mr. Baum?
I just want to thank Ahmad. I know you've been a student leader for a couple of years, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, because this is a very disturbing report, and this is not what the Pasadena City College community represents or stands for, and I know you know that. It's very bothersome to hear about this. It's not only an act of vandalism, but then it also crosses the line into a hate crime, and we'd react the same way if somebody found a burning cross on, in the quad or something like that. And so, I hope by saying something and hearing from our president and hearing from our administration, that this is, the administration and this institution embrace our Arab American students, our students of faith from the Muslim community, and that does not represent, nor will it be tolerated.
Anything else?
I just wanted to, because I am leading, to kind of just set the precedence that further continued events in the future, maybe next year, can take place, and this wouldn't just be ignored or just be a certain issue, you know, addressed this year. But I think you guys are going to be fine and more than capable in doing that. So, I thank you very much for listening to me today, and thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and as Dr. Rocha has said, it's not being forgotten or overlooked or ignored, and so we will have a report back to you at our next meeting as to what we've discovered. But certainly, we do not want anyone burning the Quran anyplace, period, certainly not on our own campus, so. The next request we have is from Vlad Viskey.
Hello. So, I looked over the board packet, and at pages 92 and 101, consent item number 117B and consent item 118B, in the first one, you see expenses for advertising for the new vice president, $15,000, $2,000, $1,000. The second document, the 118B, is even more outrageous because it's $35,000 to provide meeting rooms and food services for search committees for confidential interviews of candidates for executive positions at the Westin Pasadena. So, $35,000 in, for the Westin Hotel in Pasadena, being spent for the operation VPs. So, how is this possible? That's someone's salary for a whole year. This is a waste of taxpayers' money, and the community should know about it. And this could actually save seven sections for students at PCC. And what is the Westin offering that's so special and the Pasadena City College campus cannot offer? And in this economic times, is it the smart thing to do to spend $35,000 paying a hotel for renting, provide meeting rooms? And it is outrageous, and I think the board should look over it and not throw money out the window. Thank you.
Dr. Rocha, do you want to comment on this?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. It'll be consent item, and we'll take it up as a board at that, at that time. I believe that's all we have on non-agenda items. I have a request from David Kraus to, I actually have a request from a couple of others to address, Simon Fraser and item E and item H, and David Kraus to address item R, so we'll get to those. Oh, okay, Simon Fraser, then, non-agendas.
Good evening. It is really unfortunate that we have to talk about time, place, and manner at this time when, as Ahmad Kafy pointed out, there's been essentially what is a hate crime on campus. Originally, I was going to come to you guys today to talk about time, place, and manner, and the way that currently it's sort of being pursued at PCC. And I think there may be some talk that time, place, and manner is not necessary, isn't required. I have a sort of a moderated view on this, and I wanted to let the Board of Trustees know what my view on time, place, and manner is. The policy document, which was as currently presented, it had a few flaws in it, but essentially, the policy itself was generally sound in that it tried to prohibit speech that should not generally, and is already prohibited under, you know, First Amendment laws and so on and so forth. And a lot of the concern that you will hear about the time, place, and manner policy, at least in its current incarnation, of course, it may change in the future, is going to be about the procedures itself, and how the procedures implement the time, place, and manner policy. Given the last few years, and I've really thought very difficultly about this, because free speech is a big, I appreciate the value of free speech, I'm always talking about whether it's Brown Act, whether it's anything else, free speech is kind of important to this campus. But making sure that speech doesn't go too far, like as you saw with the burning of the Holy Quran book, there is a limit, and I think that there are constitutionally defined limits as well that allow for where free speech should be prohibited. The current incarnation of the time, place, and manner policy, I do believe goes too far, and at an Academic Senate meeting, I expressed the same view, and so did I believe the Academic Senate, although I'm sure they will speak for themselves on the issue if and when it comes up. I would like the Board of Trustees to just be aware that a time, place, and manner policy of some form will most likely be required, because it will give you a framework that will allow what can be done and what cannot be done. I would suggest that when this board look at such a policy, it consider, and it will do probably pretty soon, hopefully, that the board look at, rather than limiting speech and restricting it, that the board consider actually taking a position that protects free speech that we should allow, rather than limiting to what we shouldn't allow. There is a distinction, which definitely in Britain, some legal scholars would say as positive rights or negative freedoms. And I believe that the time, place, and manner policy should generally work on a policy of positive rights with a combination of negative freedoms, so that you don't restrict too much, but that you allow the general, what would be considered reasonable free speech to occur without promoting hate speech. It is a very fine line, and I would like to draw the board's attention to an issue that's going to be coming up before you, hopefully very soon, but that when you do so, you consider these two very opposing concepts almost, that you have to consider whether or not speech is just protected at all costs, and what shouldn't be allowed. And while the current time, place, and manner policy, I do believe, has some flaws that should be addressed, and I believe this is generally a consensus view of the campus, I would say that unlike a couple of people that I've heard, not necessarily tonight, but at other places, a time, place, and manner policy is necessary, but one that is more protective of free speech rather than limiting what speech can occur where. So, I would just hope that the Board of Trustees consider this when the issue come back. Thank you.
Ms. Dahl, do you want to take about two minutes to explain time, place, and manner, and freedom of speech?
With all due respect, Mr. Thompson, I think since that's not before the board tonight, there's probably a better forum for me to have that kind of conversation, provide assistance to the college on that. And as I was listening to Mr. Fraser's remarks, I want to request the opportunity to work with Dr. Rocha to set up a meeting of some kind where I can have conversations with some of the campus constituency members to talk about not only what I understand a lot of, but what their issues actually are.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what I'd like to suggest that the board allow me to do.
Dr. Mann?
I would just like to, first of all, ask for clarification. The college has a time, place, and manner speech right now, does it not? The recommendation was that we should revise it. And secondly, the board does not approve procedures. The board only approves policy. So, concerns that you have about procedures should be addressed administratively.
I think what Ms. Dahl is saying, that she wants to work with Dr. Rocha and develop the policy statement on time, place, and manner, and also to...
Well, both the policy and to respond to concerns about the proposed procedures, and examine what those requested changes or concerns might be, and maybe we can solve some of the problems.
Okay. Other comments on that? Good, thank you. I think those are, anybody else to address the board on a non-agenda item? If not, we'll move back to the agenda, item F, is approval of consent items. Are there any that need to be addressed separately?
No.
If not, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Vote, Mr. Pack? Advisory vote?
Oh, aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Appointment, gee, appointment to measure P, Citizens Oversight Committee, discussion with possible action. Mr. Baum, I think this is your...
Yeah, I'd like to first move the nomination of the appointment of Michael Davitt to the Measure P Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just a 15-second background, my district's appointee, Laura Alloso, served with distinction, and she also serves on the City Council of the City of Lockenada, Flint Ridge, has asked to inform me that she wishes to step down from the committee, and in her place, I am pleased to nominate the new City Council member from the City of Lockenada, Flint Ridge, Michael Davitt. Mike is the head of real estate for the Archdiocese for the City of Los, for the Catholic Church of Los Angeles area. And he also is an active supporter of community colleges. He serves on the Board of the Glendale Community College Foundation, and he also serves on the Bond Oversight Committee for Glendale College, because his last name may be familiar to many folks, is, he's the son of John Davitt, the longtime president of Glendale College. And Mike's a great guy, and I'm delighted he's willing to serve if the board will approve his nomination.
Okay, move, I believe there was, was there a second to the motion?
A second to the motion.
Ms. Brown seconded. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
President Thompson, may I ask, Trustee Baum, would you have us invite Mr. Davitt to the next meeting?
I would like to do that, and I expect that, as I mentioned too, now that we've approved that, I hope an announcement goes out into the local papers of his appointment, especially the Lockenada, Flint Ridge outlook and the Valley Sun.
Right. So, I'll ask Vice President Van Pelt to get the contact info and do all the details, so.
And also, I hope a letter of appreciation goes from the college to Laura Alloso for her service.
The next item is H, the Student Activity Fee Report, discussion with possible action. We have a request from Mr. Fraser to address us on this. Is there going to be any type of presentation first to set the background?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that, and then have...
I would invite Dean Thayer back to the podium, and Dean Thayer is going to offer a report, you'll see it on your screen, and we'll go from there. Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you. Board President Thompson, Dr. Rocha, members of the board, the campus community, good evening. My name's Scott Thayer, I'm the Assistant Dean for Student Affairs. In your board packet, you should have already received a report on the Student Activity Fee. I'm just going to go over some items, and after that, I'll take questions regarding, any questions you may have about the Activity Fee. Student Service Fund is a policy which the Student Activity Fee falls underneath. It's Board Policy 46, 43, excuse me. It's a little history of the policy. It was first chartered in May of 72, and last year, during the joint meeting with the Associated Students, it was amended, and that was at the May 6 meeting. It was about a year ago today, a few weeks ago. And at that meeting, a request was made to come back to give an overview, an update of the accounting of the Student Activity Fee. So, it is procedure number 4630. The purpose of the Activity Fee is to fund programs and activities that benefit the students of Pasadena City College. It is administered by the Student Service Fund Board of Directors, which is represented by all constituent groups on campus. I just listed the different folks that are involved in this. It's also in your packet as well. So, it's a nine-member board that has four students, myself, administrative representatives, students, faculty, and staff. The disposition of funds to be expended upon the approval of the majority of the board. So, the Board of Directors, Student Service Fund, we meet, and based upon our majority vote, that's how the programs, activities, events are funded. The different, different things that can be funded through the Student Activity Fee, educational services, campus services, co-curricular services and programs, student activities, college recognition and awards, student program operational expenses, and this is all listed in the actual policy. An overview of the Activity Fee for this past year, being that this was our first year of implementation, we were conservative in our allocation of funds, but you can see the breakdown of what we've collected and what we have allocated. So, we collected $575,000 approximately, and allocated about $453,000, and we had about 60 refund requests from students. The students, the Student Service Fund had allocated funds to the clubs with the Activity Fee, and the Associated Students of Pasadena City College require that any club that receives funds must do service hours. So, there's a minimum requirement of five hours of service that the students are required to do if their club or organization receives funding, and a maximum of 125 hours. And it's a scale based upon how much money is allocated. And I believe anything over $2,000 is 125 service hour requirement. So, the funding equates to service hours. So, basically, our students that receive funding then have to go out and do voluntary work on and off campus, so that there is a benefit to this as well, that our students are getting involved and doing service. And to date, we have about 2,200 service hours that have taken place or will take place this year for our student clubs. So, that is just a brief, quick overview of the Student Activity Fee. The accounting of the Activity Fee and the breakdown is in your report. It's itemized through Student Business Services. Each account has been set up and monitored using the district's standard operating procedures, and we get... and we get monthly reports on the accounts. So with that, that is my brief overview. If you have any questions.
Before we get the Board into questions, let's, Simon Fraser asked to address the Board on this item, so let's ask him if he wouldn't mind coming forward and raising his points, and then we'll have his perspective and mine, or his questions and mine, as we get into the discussion.
You may often hear me complaining, or criticizing, or suggesting a course of action. In this case, it's one of the fortunate times where I get to say that this is a fantastic thing, that PCC has done, and I am beyond impressed with the way that it's actually been run so far.
Did Mr. Thayer take you outside and have a conversation before?
Believe it or not, Dr. Thayer and I have had many discussions on a lot of topics, and this is one where we both agree, the Student Activity Fee has done a heck of a lot of good for this college. Unfortunately, you were all treated to me on the screen during a video where I looked terrible, unfortunately, talking about how wonderful the Student Activity Fee was. So I'm going to reiterate it in person. The Student Activity Fee has allowed the clubs, the AS, and various bodies directly related to students to be able to really improve the service and the experience that students have on this campus. It is one thing, I first came to this college in winter of 2010, and I was generally, like everyone else, I thought you just came to the class and you left. And then I started to get involved slowly, and I realized just how much of an experience to rival a four-year institution. I'd come from a three-year institution in Britain, akin to a four-year institution, and I really didn't believe that a community college could offer the same kind of experience. And now I've learned that it absolutely can. And it is really, especially this year, thanks to the Student Activity Fee. As the Officer of the QA, the Queer Alliance Club, which is an LGBT club on campus, we were able to put on a fantastic slew of events, and more events yet to come, thanks to the Student Activity Fee. There are probably about 60-odd clubs that could say the exact same thing, ranging from everything from religion to social justice to sustainability, and it's all really thanks to the Student Activity Fee. When you guys approved this fee for a pilot program, you opened up a fantastic opportunity for the students on this campus to really get involved. And I would see it as such a shame if the Student Activity Fee went away, because of the amount of good that we have been able to do with it. And I have to commend the AS and the OSA for doing a fantastic job of both allocating it, using it, and making sure that the Student Activity Fee is stretched as far as it can be. Because even with frugality of assigning the fee, we have been able to put on some fantastic events for students. And community college has to be more than you take your class and you leave. It has to provide opportunities for students to learn, to grow, to actually find the person within themselves that is so important to whatever they're going to do in their major. And it's helped me find that, and it's helped probably thousands of students as well like it. So I would urge the Board, if it takes action tonight, to continue the Student Activity Fee, because of the amazing and positive impact that it has had on Pasadena City College. That is the extent of my comment.
Thank you very much. Very good. Mr. Baum?
I have a few questions, but I want to get to the crux of what's on the table, too. As I recall, is this being brought back to us? Because I believe, I think, I know I supported it last year, and was the intention that it would be brought back to us after a year, and that we have to take action to then renew it for next year. Is that the understanding? Because I'm looking at the policy, and it doesn't look like that. We would have to actually take action to not renew it. And so, I'm not sure. What is the understanding of the administration?
I would go back to Dean Thayer, since I, you know, to be frank with you, trustee Baum, I was not here to receive that recommendation last year. So what is your recollection?
Well, my understanding is, it is an approved policy, that with the, in the motion of reviewing the minutes from last year, that you requested that there be an accounting of the Activity Fee Fund be presented within a year.
So we would have to actually take action for it not to be imposed-
That's my understanding, yes.
...on students next year. Because the policy, I just pulled up on my iPad, I have the policy, just states a very general policy, it's actually in the procedures, that the Activity Fee is imposed. So the policy just says that there should be a Student Services Fund. So as I understand, we would actually have to take action not to renew it. But then, so, I just want to be clear on that. Number two, I have a couple of questions for you, then I have a couple of questions for the students. The Student Activities Fee is one part of the Student Service Fund.
Yes.
And the Activity Fee, as I read it, collected $575,000. This were funds that were not available before. So we taxed our students $575,000 to create this fee, to create this fund, is that correct?
Well, actually, the students voted, if you recall, last year, two-thirds voted to approve the fee.
Yes.
And so they contributed to the fee.
But this comes from the students.
This is, this is an Activity Fee, so this is new for this year, yes.
The other sources of Student Services Fund, as I understand it, are revenues from the bookstore, food service, and other places on campus.
Yes, that's correct.
What was the amount of that revenue?
The total of that was about $360,000.
So $360,000. So that's on top of the $575,000.
Yes.
And the Student Services Fund funds a number of things, that are not just club support, but what other types of organizations, activities get supported through the Student Services Fund?
Well, basically, what we did as a group, and the band would be one, I just, our marching band is a huge one, athletics programming, let me have a list here as well. But what we tried to do, art gallery, CEC High School graduation, commencement, dance department, courier, forensics, health science graduation-
So those are things separate from-
These are separate, photo ID operations.
But also, there's some discretionary funds that go to various departments, right, that, to support certain activities of various departments.
Yeah, basically, the process, what we have is, in the fall of each year, we'll put out a request, if anyone's interested in requesting funds from the Student Service Fund, we'll put it out to the campus community, and then they apply.
Sure.
And so what's happened is, I mean, even these programs like the band, that's been going on, and marching in our rose parade for years, they applied for additional funds to support their activities. So they come and do a presentation, so they have the opportunity to request an amount based upon what they feel they need for the year. The group will discuss it and allocate it. Our discussion had been really to focus the Activity Fee money for on-campus events that directly impact students, whereas our Student Service Fund had been, allowed us to really enhance the co-curricular programming, and within the instructional divisions, so they can do creative things, as well as the clubs and the campus events. So what we tried to do was separate the two, use the Activity Fee money more for the clubs and things that happen on campus, whereas the Student Service Fund really was more the traditional things that have been funded through that amount.
Let me ask you this, and then before we go into actually the allocations for the Student Activities Fee. So we collected $575,000 from students, and we have also $360,000, $360,000 from the other sources of revenue from the Student Services Fund. And one of the things I had advocated for is saying, if we, if the Student Activities Fee generated sufficient revenue, we could actually no longer have to depend on bookstore or food services for additional funds to support, because it's got $200,000 more than that, and therefore, we could actually reduce bookstore prices to our students, because we could replace that. What would be an argument to then say, okay, let's set that money aside and lower the bookstore prices for our students, instead of, and then, and all the funds we need are more than enough covered by the Student Activity Fee?
Well, the bookstore falls under administrative services, so I know they have some things that would fall into play with that. But in regards to textbooks, which is, which is a big thing that the bookstore sells, the margin on that is minimal, considering, there's not a large profit margin on that. So to reduce textbook prices, which is a big issue for students, what they have to pay for textbooks. The students right now have the option, they go online, and they shop. And so basically, our bookstore has to maintain, they have to be in the black every year. And they've done a lot of things to enhance the experience for students on campus. Also, money that is generated through the bookstore food service vending is recycled back. So it's, we'll allocate funds to groups, they'll spend the money on campus, in our bookstore, in our cafeteria, so it's a cycle of money being recycled. Whereas if they take that money off campus, then there is no opportunity for those dollars to be circulated on campus.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they're going to, things will cost less for them at the bookstore, so more of that money will stay on campus. But that's, 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 yeah, that's what I-
I think Mr. Pack may want to comment on that.
Do you want to comment on that specifically, because I have a lot of questions for you?
On the bookstore, yes. I think, I'm not necessarily opposed to lowering the prices in the bookstore. I do think, though, that high prices in bookstores are something that we see across the higher education system, and I think it would take a much more concerted effort among many colleges to lower the price of books, because really, we are at the mercy of the distributors of the books.
Well, I'm not talking about, but I just know, right off the top, we're charging students extra a couple hundred thousand dollars of revenue from the bookstore that we might be able to put back in their pockets by lowering prices.
Sure, and so, but what I'm suggesting is that to make any really meaningful impact on the cost of books, really, it would take a much larger effort than just lowering the prices at the PCC bookstore, because, I mean, in my understanding of the bookstore also is that much of the revenue comes from the sale of non-book things. So, I mean, really, the bookstore, I think the prices that we're charging for books are not outrageous compared to what you experience at other colleges.
Saying, if I could still put $300,000 back in the pockets of students, or customers of the bookstore, well, let's go-
Do you want the administration to look into that, investigate that, and go back?
Well, no, no, I think philosophically, if we're going to raise funds for student activities through a fee, we should then subsequently, in turn, lower prices at the bookstore, because the fee is actually a clear fund that you can identify, instead of, I don't know if I'm paying an extra $5 a book, or an extra dollar a book, or an extra $5 a cap, or $2 a ticket.
But what I'm asking is, do you want the administration to look into that suggestion, and then come back to us with some report or some recommendation?
I don't want to direct the administration for anything yet, until we have a board kind of agreement on it. So I want to get to the crux of that, but that's a, that's an issue for me as well.
Okay.
And then I want to go through this, how the fees were, the funds were allocated, but I see Ms. Wa has her.
I just wanted to echo trustee Baum's concern, because I had heard a lot of discussion also about the cost of textbooks. And I don't want to direct the administration to do anything in particular, other than when we look at the cost of textbooks to the students. And, you know, maybe one of the things that we could look for is the offering of texts through eBooks, or some partnership with a resale, you know, just something to help the students. So I do agree that if they're paying the extra fee, and we have enough money, I'd certainly like to see the students be able to benefit in some way.
So that's, so then I want to, I want to go to the issue, and I presume the fee is, the Activity Fee expenditure, the allocations are made primarily with the direction of the student government and the rest of the committee, correct?
Yeah, the Student Service Fund, the nine-member group, and then the, we've allocated funds to the clubs, and then the clubs have a process-
Two other questions for you, indicated that you, the allocations are made, I'd be interested how you track how those funds are actually used, and then how you're actually checking, you said that there's 2200 service hours that have been generated. For what types of service does that do for, how is that counted?
Well, basically, the, and I know Nolan's intimate about this, because he's a part of the Service Hours Committee, or has been in the past, but generically, the clubs will allocate through their funding committee X amount of dollars to a club, say it's $2,000. So that club's now required to complete 125 service hours. That committee has a service committee as well, they have a funding committee and a service committee. So each club has to submit to the Service Hours Committee their completed hours prior to being eligible to receive additional funding. So what they do is they'll track that, and what is it about on-campus events, anytime students participate on campus with volunteering, for example, the job fair, those students were receiving service hour credit. Welcome Day is another event, those are on-campus events. Then we have, some students go into the community and volunteer, and they'll get a letter, they'll bring that back and say, I did 20 hours of volunteer service for my club. Those hours are tallied, and then those clubs are informed if they've met their requirements.
So if I'm manning a booth for my club at Welcome Day, is that also volunteer service hours?
No, no, the volunteer hours don't count for representing your own club. Actually, I don't think clubs get any hours during Welcome Week, and club, or sorry, Club Week, because Club Week is when clubs advertise for themselves. So they do not get volunteer hours for staffing their own event. It's for events that Associated Students, or the Office of Student Affairs, or different parts of the college host. And also, I just also want to stress that students do often go off-campus to collect their service hours in various organizations in the community. So it really is getting students to branch out and experience many different components of our community.
And then, lastly, how are you auditing how the people are using the funds?
Well, we basically, they'll submit their proposals at the beginning, they'll be allocated funds, and then if they want to use those funds, we have a process where they, the advisor, the club president, has to sign a requisition, attach an invoice, that goes to my office, we verify that, that they have the money, and then I'll sign it, and then we'll move it to the Vice President Administrative Services offices, so that we know that we have the balancer intact, the invoices are attached, so we know exactly where the funds are being utilized.
Do those come through us at some point, too?
No.
No, I don't recall that. So, and let's, I'll take one more minute, and then just like, I'm concerned about some of these expenditures or allocations that I've seen, so, but some of them, I just don't know. What's, and I'll ask the students, what's the B A M N club?
BAM.
The BAM club.
Yeah.
I don't know what the acronym stands for.
The acronym stands for By Any Means Necessary.
What is that?
They are a part of the Defend Affirmative Action Party. They, we have a chapter here on this campus that's manned by a student and a number of students here, and their main purpose is to foster social justice and to defend affirmative action, and also to work towards the passing of the Dream Act in California, and also in the United States.
Okay. And then what is Campus Crusade for C K H U L U?
That one actually is, it's a gaming club. It arose out of sort of, there are lots of Campus Crusades for blank, you know, insert whatever here, and so Cthulhu is sort of just a lighthearted way of naming the club that does sort of board games, card games, online gaming, and video games.
Okay. What is C H D V?
Child Development.
Child Development.
Okay.
Perhaps we can shortcut this, maybe you can make a list of things you'd like answers to.
Well, I would like to know, what is, this says, this makes it sound like we're funding an entire position, it says cross-cultural position. Is this a full-time, ongoing staff position funded by the Student Activities Fund? And was that an intention of the fund?
Well, that was a discussion that came up this year. We have a part-time cross-cultural center coordinator. We have had that position funded out of the flea market for almost 20 years. We heard tonight some incidents that occurred on campus. The Cross Cultural Center has been a hub for where our cultural programming has occurred. The funding has been inconsistent, it's been up and down. We've been able to do a lot with the minimum things that we do. So the proposal was, the cross-cultural position also is the volunteer center position, which means with all these new service hours-
But answer my question, is this to fund a staff position?
This would be to fund the position.
Does the, does the procedure and the policy allow for the Student Activity Fee to fund positions? I'm just not sure.
I asked that question to myself when I first heard about this, and I, the policy, as far as I understand it, says that it can cover operational expenses and various other things for programs, and so if we consider the Cross Cultural Center program in which students are direct participants, which is the language of the policy, then I think technically it would be allowed within the language that we've set forth.
So this is another way to do a hiring, is this position hired by the district and then by the Board? Because we actually approve all hiring.
It just, basically, our flea market coordinated position, similar, is funded by the flea market. It's not, it's auxiliary dollars. But the process is the same process any employee would go through, through the issue contract. So basically, what we stipulate is, the position is in place if the funding is in place, and the person in the position understands that. So, for example, if this position was in place, and we stated this in the initial recommendation was, it'd be reviewed annually to see if this is something that would continue.
So what you're saying is, it's kind of like what Dr. Sugimoto, we're able to supplement the funding for her position through contributions from the foundation, so we're able to supplement funding for this position through the Student Activity Fund?
Yes, because currently, it's flea market funded, so it's non-district funded at this time.
What's the Inter-Club Council's spring funding for $30,000?
That's an additional amount allocated to the club- That's a, an additional amount allocated to the clubs to receive funding for the spring.
Okay, then, then lastly, I guess I'll go back to Ahmadi's point, um, and this will seem hard-hearted, but if we could find fifty-seven hundred dollars to, to fund a, a Student Gender Bender Day, how did we use that? Um, why didn't we fund anything that increased cultural awareness or appreciation for the Arab-American or the Muslim community?
Well, we have, um, we look at all proposals that are submitted. And during that process, people are given the opportunity to do presentations. Um, if, if we don't receive a proposal, we don't fund per se a specific event. Now, the Cross Cultural Center historically has been able to do a lot of those things, but because of the limited staff time, um.
Well, it sounds like the ones who are the closest to the process get the first pick of the money, and the folks who maybe haven't been invited to be part of the process get left out in the cold.
We have seventy clubs on campus, and they're all informed about the funding process in their meetings. And so each of our clubs are chartered and in good standing. So we, we, we try to make a conscious effort to get the word out, to make sure everyone is, it has an opportunity.
Mr. Pack first, and then Ahmad has.
Yeah, I think a, a couple of things that I just want to say on that. I think that the, the clubs and organizations closest to the money getting the most, I think is definitely, um, something I want to address, because I think it, it's, that's, it's not an accurate perception at all. As someone who's participated, um, in all, all levels of the Student Activity Fee funding from.
The data says otherwise, Nolan. The data, the, the allocations say otherwise.
Right, right, right.
Who gets the most money are the, are, are the people that are closest to you and Jamie and who other, others, as I look at this, so.
Well, I, I think one of the issues, though, is that we, we can't fund an event that wasn't proposed. Like, the Student Service Fund Committee and the ICC's, uh, Funding Committee, we don't make events happen. We just approve proposals that are coming to us. So if, if there's not a proposal for something, there's no way for us to give it money.
I'll let Ahmad.
It's the process.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, technically appreciate if, uh, my call would be used in the political matters on, and the differences within this conversation. Um, I, I guess Nolan was kind of alluding to that there is no, you know, Arab or Muslim club here on campus, even though we have, you know, a, a significant amount of them, um, for various reasons. I have no idea, maybe fear of some, or something else. Who knows, there could be a hundred different reasons why exactly. But, um, so those events can't, shouldn't, or probably wouldn't come through. I think the cultural diversity, I guess, position, um, does entail a lot of work and would probably need to be adequately funded if those, um, if we do expect an even broader, um, form of events or cultural activities to take place. So it's not really like, um, why is it that, um, the gay alliance, or the queer alliance on campus is being funded events and not, um, Middle Eastern events? I think that both of them definitely need to be funded. And I think, um, this Student Activity Fee could just broaden and provide more money and more funds for even more events to take place. And that could be all-inclusive on that end, and not actually restricting, and, uh.
Nobody's advocating restriction.
No, I think, I think we're, we're raising issues here, and we're surely not going to be in a position to answer all of the questions this evening, but I think, uh, legitimate issues. I think Ms. Brown wanted to say something, or Dr. Mann, and then Dr. Rocha.
Yes, I, uh, I was opposed to, to the Student Activity Fee, those of you who are here remember, because I thought that this was not a good time to put additional, uh, demand on students. But I see only sixty students asked for a waiver, and I don't know whether that means they didn't know how to or not. But I was very impressed by the testimony of the student of the improvement of the quality of student life. So I think that is a legitimate use. But I would like to point out that the money that was collected for the Student Activity Fee would have funded ninety-six sections of courses if it had been gone to that purpose. And I guess my point in pointing that out is, there's a lot, the campuses are very complex, and there's a lot of different needs for funds. And I don't know if the students were aware of that, if they would think it's more important to fund the clubs as opposed to funding ninety-six classes.
Okay, Dr. Rocha?
Yeah, well, maybe I can be, uh, helpful in wrapping this up for tonight, since it's my item, um, you know. Uh, first of all, I say, I, I take very seriously and deeply respect, uh, Trustee Baum's, uh, helpful questions, which I take as helping the report to be better. Um, and, uh, so towards that end, a couple of comments, and then, um, I want the board to know that I'm not bringing anything, if, this is a discussion, I'm not bringing anything for action to the board tonight. But I will, um, give a signal here of, uh, where, you know, based on this discussion, uh, where I think we, we ought to go. First of all, I would say that out of the, uh, questions, and all questions are fair, that as we develop this report, um, you will notice in Vice President Van Pelt's report, um, that now he puts a line or two of explication, uh, under, uh, items that, uh, is explanatory items. And I think it would be helpful, um, since many of us are not familiar with, uh, you know, to have a thumbnail, um, uh, description of each one of these items, and I'm sure you have it. And that would make the report longer, but I think that it would, uh, be helpful with, with some of the questions. Um, the other thing, and, you know, and again, I'm speaking entirely for myself. I brought this forward because it's a required report. Um, you know, we need to discuss this out in the open, right? Uh, and then the administration will bring back to the board a, a recommendation, and of course, um, you know, work with associated, uh, students on this. I would note, and, and here's, uh, one of the questions. I am, um, supportive of the, of the, uh, student fee, and, uh, I want to, uh, work my way towards making a recommendation towards that end, um, at a subsequent meeting. I would note, and the primary reason for that, uh, Simon, if you will, we're, we're gonna, uh, move on here. We've had public comment, and so, um, it is kind of distracting to be talking, and you have your hand up, so.
I can wait until I, until you.
Well, that'll be up to.
What we're saying is that we had a good public discussion, we're not taking action this evening. So when Dr. Rocha is finished, I think we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, so. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, if you look, for example, at the fall of 2010, um, two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, seven-hundred dollars, and the fee is ten dollars, okay? So if I'm doing my math correctly, okay, and so you math people out there, check me on this. Um, that means that twenty-seven thousand, uh, four-hundred-and-seventy students, or registrations, if you will, uh, opted, uh, to pay the fee, or if you will, opted not to request the refund.
Right.
My experience is, that's a very high rate of subscription. And that you could, not conclusively, but you could take that as a very high rate of support among the students for the student fee. The thing that I would, uh, ask Scott and associated students, and the re, and the reason, and I will probably work with you so that we can, uh, develop a recommendation to continue this for at least another year, um, is that I think that I take Trustee Baum's questions, at least for me, and this is only my own, uh, I don't want to speak for, uh, Trustee Baum, is that we want to make sure that, um, that this, uh, high rate of subscription does, uh, represent, um, the, the will of the students, if you will, okay? And it seems to, on, on the numbers, one thing we might do is to make sure that it's clear to students that they have an opt-out, okay? Because I take, again, uh, the trustee's comments as being not oppositional to the fee, but to the process that allocates what is a significant amount of money by anyone's measure. Um, the, um, you know, I'm looking at, the, the academic senate does not get this much money.
Right.
Uh, for, um, its activities. And I think, uh, if I can speak my own concern, but I'm sure that we can reconcile this with, uh, Trustee Baum's, uh, very fair concerns, is that, um, the, we want to make sure that all twenty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy students who paid the fee have an opportunity to know how they access the benefits of the fees. Because whether it's, um, a, um, more broad religious and educational program, uh, it is not yet clear after one year, um, what the breadth of the service is. But, but that's also why I would say, my, my own view, that we should probably continue, because that needs to be, uh, clarified. Some of the other questions, again, I think ought to, uh, ought to be, uh, gotten answers to and move on. I would say finally, though, that when we have this, and, um, a fee is a fee is a fee, okay? Whether it's a student fee for tuition, or a, a fee is a fee is a fee. And I think all of us need to be concerned that where students are charged a fee, that it is a, um, you know, uh, something that benefits, uh, the, the greatest number for the greatest good. But I think that we can, uh, work this out. So therefore, I, uh, forgive me, trustees, for, um, having this longer than I would have wished for, but the re, re, report is required. And so I'd ask, uh, for, um, uh, time to, uh, work with the dean and work with associated students to develop a, a recommendation for next year on which you can vote.
How much time do you think you need to do that?
Um, is, if, I think we have the June fir, first meeting, but let's do it in the, at the second June meeting, okay?
Just a reminder, we, we're leading up to commencement. And I only say that just because it's a really busy time, but we can.
We'll have to burn some midnight oil.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, aim then for the, uh, June sixteenth or fifteenth, I guess, fifteenth.
And that'll give me time to fully consult the trustees and make sure that I have their, um, um, feedback and can feed back that back and get a bill that will, uh, move forward. Because I, I do think we need to move forward with it. One point I noticed is, is that, um, you know, the largest expenditure is for, is almost a hundred thousand dollars for the I-Pass, and, which we were just awarded for. And I think, under any circumstances, um, you know, I, I think that's a, a good thing.
Well, Mr. Martin, and then Dr. Fellow.
Well, I want to ask you a question. So, we've been beating this, on this topic for a long time, but there hasn't really been any chance for the rest of the trustees to comment at all. If you, as president, are saying this is coming back for discussion, and you want to hear my comments whenever it comes back for the first time, that's fine with me, and I'll hold.
No, I think.
Or I'm happy to make them now, so you're hearing them now.
Well, I think that the better.
But you, as the president and superintendent, want?
Well, the, the better approach would be for you to bring them out now, and then we can, they can be considered as, uh, the Dr. Rocha administration deliberate on this, uh, I just.
Well, then I'll, I'll make mine succinctly if you'll let me.
Please, thank you.
Uh, number one, I oppose the fee, and I'm still against the fee. Uh, we have a lot of students with a lot of diverse needs here. Certainly, it's great that many students want to take advantage of social service and that social interaction, but it's a diverse thing. There's other campuses, there's people taking just one class. So I still, uh, oppose a tax on our students. Uh, I want to commend the students for the way you have the service hours as a method for collecting the fees to the clubs. I think that's extremely complimentary. I think that was a great plan, I love it, so kudos there. Uh, it was my understanding, when we were implementing this tax, one of the arguments in favor of it was that in addition to the social component, which many people find the social component very rewarding, and that's great, and that's important. I also thought there were longer library hours proposed, uh, additional tutoring labs, and other academic benefits to students besides just social club benefits to students. And I don't see and didn't hear one academic piece of benefit in everything that was reported here tonight. So maybe there is, and it just didn't come out. But I thought that was part of the cell, and that would be something that would be important to me, where students can see the benefit of this fee in an academic way, if that's their goal, not just in a social club way. So those are my comments.
Good, thank you. Dr. Fellow?
My, my comments follow on, uh, what Trustee Martin just said, is, can academic units apply for this? At the university, um, we apply. For instance, the journalism program applies, because they bring students to Vietnam for two weeks as part of reporting public affairs. I applied for the Florence Pro, Program. Is it open to academic units?
Yes, um, and that's what the fall proposals are about. We, we come together as a group, we solicit proposals, and then we review them. Um, this was the first year we went through this process. We've been going through the process with, um, the Student Service Fund, but with the Activity Fee was our first year. So we, you know, we're working out, uh, the kinks in this process. But yes, academic areas do apply and can apply.
Other questions or comments this evening?
Sorry, Chris, no, no, Doug.
Ms. Brown?
No, I'm okay, I was just checking, but, um, Mr. Martin.
And just as we're directing the administration, I would welcome, as part of the, the follow-up, is a report on the student service, the entirety of the Student Services Fund.
Dr. Wilcox?
Just to point out, in some of the consent items you approved tonight, a number of them were partially funded by the Student Service Fund, on some of those instructional trips, just as was described.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a report back then on June fifteenth, uh, meeting then.
Yep.
And, um, I think you've gotten lots of questions and lots of, um, suggestions for things to be looked at and report back to us. So, let's then move on to the next item on the agenda, if we can. Item I, which is the, um, annual re, uh, Board Review of Student Trustee Privileges, Discussion with Possible Action. Mr. Blument has packed lead this offer.
No, actually, um, it, it, Nolan will. Um, this is an, is an item, uh, for the trustees, uh, for, uh, discussion and possible action. Um, it is a, already a bylaw that provides for the, um, uh, student trustee, okay? And, uh, we reviewed this today with council. Uh, what is, um, in front of you is the entire policy, but on the second page of the policy are the item five of the student trustee privileges.
Right.
These privileges each year are discretionary on the part of the board. Uh, and these were the privileges that the trustees by vote, uh, granted to current trustee pack. Uh, so it is time since, uh, I also learned today, because I asked, that trustee pack's, um, term officially ends on May thirty-first, okay? And, uh, although as a, uh, ceremonially, he will, uh, of course, participate in commencement. Uh, and then, of course, the, the students are, uh, doing an election right now for student trustee. So the, uh, issue before the board, um, that I'm putting in front of you is, uh, the discussion of this policy and, uh, the approval of the current trustee, student trustee privileges, uh, and/or any, uh, changes that the trustees wish to entertain.
Can we perhaps start with Mr. Pack, and let him tell us?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve him.
Second?
Okay, but I.
Okay, so you have a motion on the table.
That's fine, but I don't, let's let Nolan say, has it worked well, or are there things that ought to be in it, or not to be in, et cetera, so that's.
You want to ask him if taking the money out is gonna help?
No, Sean, I'd just like to have him comment on it, if that's okay.
Uh, well, I think, um, I mean, I've been really, uh, honored to be able to participate with the Board of Trustees to the degree that I've, uh, have in the last year, and board retreats and so forth. I think that, um, the policies that we have definitely allow for a very, uh, lively and engaging discussion, including the student trustee. So, um, I've been completely satisfied with the policies as they exist. Uh, I know that one question that floats around is, should the student trustee have an actual vote or not? And I don't necessarily have a position on that myself. Um, but I think that the student trustee privileges, as they're listed, uh, in the current policy, are, uh, great.
Okay, Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to comment, I, and Mr., I'll let Mr. Martin make the, the motion. I, I think we've been fortunate here in having extraordinarily outstanding trustees. Each year, I think, well, we can't possibly get a better one, and then we, you know, we do. It is my understanding that this is all we legally can do for the student. We cannot actually give the student the right to have their vote counted to make the quorum. And, uh, who, you know, we, first of all, it may have the student, give the student the right to, to speak, and then to make motions, and second, motions, and then have their vote. You didn't used to have that. So I, I think that this has worked very well, and if we legally could do more, I would be in favor of it. But I think it, it counsels right here that this is the maximum that we can.
Yeah, your policy goes as far as the law allows you to go.
Yeah, so that's why we haven't gone farther.
Mr. Baum?
I just, uh, also want to take this as an opportunity to recognize a, a former student trustee, Nick Zomit. He was the. He was the student trustee when I was the board president, and he's the one that first got us on this path to, to where we are today. And, and as John said, we've, we've been fortunate by the, how distinguished our trustees have been, and have added considerably to our deliberation. And we want to continue to empower the trustee and the student voice here on campus.
Other comments? Mr. Martin, I think made the motion, I believe, was it seconded?
No, it's seconded.
Ms. Brown, seconded. Moved and seconded, that we continue with the policy as is. Student trustee advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd also like to just briefly echo the comments, the complimentary comments about Mr. Pack and the work he's done as student trustee. In four years nearly, I've been on this board, we've had excellent student trustees, and we're very fortunate and privileged to have that, so thank you very much. I'm going to do one thing and take one thing out of order, because I see Mr. Kraus has been sitting patiently there in the audience, and he's asked to speak on item R, so we might take that one, which is to adopt a resolution number 474 for Classified School Employee Week, discussion of possible action. Mr. Kraus, so welcome.
Thank you. President Thompson, members of the Board of Trustees, and guests. My name's David Kraus, I'm president of Chapter 777 in Facilities. I want to thank the administration and board for having this on the agenda. I think any, any, you know, recognition for classified employees is appreciated. I do have a short film, if you don't mind seeing it, it's only three minutes long.
Good.
And it's made by Mount SAC, and unfortunately, one mistake, there's 112 community colleges, not 110.
Okay, all right.
When it was made, maybe it was actually. Is there audio?
It, it will in a minute.
25,000 regular classified employees, serving over 2.6 million students across 110 community colleges, and the communities in which these colleges serve. This is a well-trained classified workforce that has embraced the concept of lifelong learning. Many classified employees have become community college students themselves in pursuit of an associate degree or higher. Many others already hold a bachelor's, master's, or doctorate degree. Other classified professionals are adjunct faculty or community education instructors. California's community college system is a machine that does not stop running. There are classified professionals on campus 24/7, including holidays, many of whom students or other campus members never see. Security officers, carpenters, food service workers, lighting technicians, research analysts, educational advisors, teaching assistants, groundskeepers, they are all here. Classified professionals are the bedrock of the institution. When you think about it, classified employees are generally the first college employees that prospective students experience, the ones that support the students' efforts throughout their college stay, and the last ones students experience when they leave. What an honor classified professionals have in creating a campus environment that is conducive to learning and student success. We all share a common goal. One student's success is the result of hundreds of individuals working very diligently, and quite honestly, without ever crossing paths. Whether it is through student services, clean and safe campuses, teaching and learning, or providing technical support, to name a few, in the end, it all comes back to the fact that when each student graduates, transfers, or has a successful college and educational experience, it is because it took a dedicated and dynamic village to raise that student. Could you imagine a day without a classified professional?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move approval of resolution 474.
Okay, Dr. Mann has moved, I think Mr. Martin seconded, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, now let's go back to our regular order on the agenda. Item J, under College Administration Reports and Recommendations, Fiscal Services, Authorization to Transmit Third Quarterly Financial Satisfaction Report, discussion with possible action.
Move authorization to transmit.
Second. We don't want to discuss it.
Vice President Brian Pelt is on for Items J and Item K.
J first?
Well, under tabs J and K are the two reports, and obviously, the, the numbers are tracking according to what we expected. And rather than go through the numbers, if there are any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
We are, we're doing these two separately. Should we do them as a, as a package?
Well, sorry, what I meant was that under item tab K is actually the second part of item J.
Aye.
I would, I would suggest that we, we continue with any discussion and the action on J.
Okay. A motion made and seconded, is there any, are there any questions or discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item K, we do have one request from a member of the audience to address this on this. Dr. Van Pelt, you want to do the overview?
So the governor came out with his may revise on Monday, and essentially, they found about $6 billion that they had not expected. Unfortunately, they cannot come up with a reasonable explanation for how that happened, which leaves people wondering whether there, there'd be a reversal on that. The governor's plan for that, however, is that he would like to, as he calls it, buy back some of the deferred apportionment that has been levied on the districts. In this case, $350 million total, which would amount to about $7 million for PCC. Now, what that means is that it would help us with our cash flow, but it has no impact on the budget, because it's just money that they owe us. They would just catch up in the payment process, so it's not additional money for general apportionment. Now, in order to come up with the, the next draft of the, the budget plan for the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee, I've passed out the colored revision of the chart that's previously been distributed. And there are some significant changes, particularly on the first column, Retirement Incentive, $3.14 million. And I know that this is on the agenda next, but this is a one-time savings, so it only applies to 2011-12. Thereafter, it does not change the base of, of, of the budget. Non-filling of positions has been increased to $2.5 million. Optimized sections remained at 1.5. And then I put in numbers for proposal purposes for revenue enhancement at $1 million, and efficiencies at 1.46. Together, that tallies up to the goal, which is in the upper left, which is $9.6 million. That is still the goal that we're shooting for. It is possible that through the budget development process in Sacramento, that that number can change. At this moment, it seems unlikely that that number would increase. And, but that, that's the most realistic number that we currently have, and therefore, that's the number that we're working toward. It's also important to recognize that this is the next step in the budget for 2012 and 13, which we are still anticipating being a difficult year. So, as we develop the budget, we're looking for a, a two-year plan still, so that we can ensure the district's finances are in order through 2013.
Okay, let's, we have a request from Victor Interiano, and again, if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, I apologize, to address the board on this issue.
Good evening. I would like to direct all of you to this very shiny document that Dr. Van Pelt has just produced. The very last column talks about efficiencies. There's one thing that's missing from there, and it's reduction of wasteful spending. So as Mr. Viskey pointed out a little while ago, $35,000 is being apportioned for use of the Pasadena Weston for VP interviews. Now, my question is, what does the Weston in Pasadena have that Pasadena City College does not offer? We have beautiful facilities, we have top-notch food, and yet, it's being taken away at a different area. Now, the thing I would like to bring up is that all of you passed it without a single question or even discussing it, but yet, where concerns the student fee, the student activity fee, all of you have questions, particularly, particularly you, Mr. Baum. You want to go through all the documents and look, nitpick on every single thing, but yet, where concerns this particular issue, nothing. So, my concern here is that when a student brings up a concern, and, you know, you don't really discuss it, it's one of two things. You either don't care, or you're just not paying attention. Thank you.
Other questions about item J on, or K, excuse me, on the agenda, the Fiscal Services College Budget Update? Mr. Pack?
I just have a clarification question, or I guess, on, on the comment. Is it not customary that we provide accommodations for candidates that are flown in from, from various places, and that in floating six positions, wouldn't we have to possibly provide accommodations for many candidates? I mean, like a, a speech and debate tournament is not substantially less expensive?
Well, you provide accommodations, you also have a place off-campus to provide confidentiality of the applicants. That's standard procedure in cities, standard procedures in PCC, and probably every place, every public agency, doing interviews, so it's not unusual.
I just wanted to, like, articulate that for the record.
Good, thank you. Other questions or comments? K?
Well, here's the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, right ahead, please. So you're right ahead.
I'm trying to.
We're doing, we're not on L yet, we're on K.
Well, here's, you know, I'll introduce Lyle Engeldinger, the dean of Human Resources. This is the, the bit, I'm sorry.
We have to act on K, or there's no action?
No, K was an informative.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
K was, I apologize.
Item L, Human Resources, PARAS SERP Report and Action to Approve SERP.
Yep. Dean Engeldinger will give a report of the SERP subscription, and I'll turn it over to him. And in doing so, I'll say that this is a, an action item. It comes with the recommendation of the administration to move forward and to authorize moving forward with the, the final approval for the SERP. And I do want to also point out that in doing so, I want to especially commend Lyle and everyone in Human Resources, who really have been burning the midnight oil since last fall, when we first presented this and worked with the PCCFA to get this done, and extend, and then extended to all employees. So, appreciate, very, very appreciative of the board for its support, but especially, there was so much detail and hard work and information that had to go into this very, very, very good result that we're reporting tonight. And so with that, I, I commend you, Lyle, and congratulate you and all your staff, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. I'd like to introduce to you, if he's still awake, Eric O'Leary. He's a senior vice president with the Public Agency Retirement Services. He's here to help us with responding to questions. Before we go forward, I'd like to make a very brief set of comments. I think you have a one-sheet document, which we handed out to you earlier, which gives the results of the enrollment period. And I'd like to go through those numbers with you, just, just very, very briefly. The enrollment period ended last Monday, May 16th, and we, we ended with 87 actual retirement receipts during that period. Breaks down as follows, 42 faculty, 10 academic management, 27 CSEA represented employees, 20 issue represented employees, three confidential employees, and four classified management supervisors. The projected net savings, now this is using actual data from these potential retirees, as Dr. Van Pelt reported, is $3,138,161 for the first year. And I should also mention that that, that number is probably understated. Now, we would very much welcome any questions you may have about this, and we're prepared to go in great detail with you, if that's what you would like. We would, as Dr. Rocha said, present to you that this, this program for approval.
Are there questions? Mr. Martin, you?
Well, I have a comment. I'd like to commend Dr. Rocha for his tenacity in working through the retirement incentive. And in, in no less part, we need to also commend the units that, that you negotiated with, who worked through this part to enable this to happen. So this was a large collective unit, you know, part of a lot of work and a lot of time, where on again, off again, and between the units, and some vision by our administrative team, and I'm just thrilled it worked out as well as it did what appears to be for everybody, and especially, in the end, our students, because that cost savings ultimately means we're going to be able to offer more classes than we otherwise would not be able to allow. So, I'm thrilled at the success. I'm appreciative to the units and the administration for working through it. I'm just elated, because I think our students are going to come out ahead.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Baum?
And just to piggyback on, on what Mr. Martin said, that's compliments both to Lyle and, and Dr. Rocha and, and the team. The, this, as, as Mr. Martin says, going back to the last item, we're going, we're going to minimize the number of course reductions in the coming year, even though we're facing severe budget cuts based on this budget, and this, this is, this is the largest part of that. And I, and I don't know if we really underscored the fact that compared to other districts up and down the state, our plan takes very few courses off, off the schedule. It actually maintains our ability to serve as many students as possible.
Could I also mention Lynda McGee and Ms. Polo, who were really outstanding participants starting over two years ago with this particular project? So they, they deserve, I think, great accolades.
Other questions or comments? K, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Eric.
Move by Dr. Fellow, seconded by Dr. Mann. Comments, Dr. Rocha?
I would just, again, and, and thank our PARAS rep for staying so long, and, but good work to PARAS, because everything that they, when they made their original presentation to us, and you accepted them as the agency, as the company that would handle this for us, everything that they said would happen, happened, in terms of their projections. So, you know, so very, very appreciative of the PARAS. I did want to say that in reporting, what Lyle has reported, that we have, are reporting the numbers only. We are not releasing the names of the retirees until we can speak to the managers, and so that inform the managers first of who's retiring in, in their units. But the approval that you may, just made is not contingent. The 87 retirees are moving forward, and just wanted to mention that, and thank you again.
And then, just to speak to your, your plans, Dr. Rocha, a lot of managers are retiring. Are you planning to fill each and every one of those positions?
No.
So we're actually going to have a much leaner administrative leadership?
As I've been saying all along, we will have a smaller administration in staff next year, and a significantly reduced administration and staff expense, and a increased expense in instruction.
The projected savings in year one, excuse me, is $3,138,161, and that's said to be a conservative estimate. So, if that's the case, that'll be wonderful, and certainly, that's the premise upon which I think as we proceeded on with this plan, and it seems to be working out as projected and as desired, so. We voted a motion? We have not yet voted, I don't think. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item M?
Mr. President?
Yes.
You slipped off a K faster than I. You slipped off a K faster than I, I always wish we could just briefly go back to K.
Okay, sure.
And I'm sorry, I, I can't see everybody out there, and I hope Glad is still here. But, there's been a lot of discussion about the vice presidential names. And I made a comment when we approved the search for the vice presidential positions, that I conceptually understood those who were concerned about the number of names of vice presidents. But what we see on our budget layout in item K is non-filling-up positions, and when you look down the list, you see where the brunt of that reduction in force is coming from administrators, managers, and supervisors. $2.5 million. And what I think we, as trustees, trying to grasp the bigger picture, have to recognize is, and appreciate, is that Dr. Rocha has a administr, a streamlined administrative system. And quite frankly, as long as the administrative costs are going down, and they're going down significantly, and improving efficiencies in administration, saving funds that allow us to offer more educational opportunities, I really don't care what you call them, you can call them vice presidents, it's fine with me. And if, if creating names that called her vice presidents, get the right people here for the right efficiencies that allow us to reduce and streamline administration, to allow more courses, then you have my enthusiastic support as part of the bigger picture. This budget, item K, reemphasizes exactly that streamline issue. And I, that, to me, is really important. Now, there's a lot of details to come that has to support the numbers in each of the colorful boxes. But I'm appreciative of the format, and I'm appreciative of the priorities that this budget reduction is emphasizing, with the streamline of the administration taking the first cut of it, trying to preserve the academic courses as much as possible. I think that needs to be stated.
Thank you very much for quite stating it quite clearly. Moving on now to item M on the agenda.
Yes, in calling Dean Cole, oh, I'm sorry, you're not Facilities.
Thank God.
You're Facilities.
I would be a disaster.
Okay. This is actually a streamlined item, because we were going to present the emergency resolution today, but we just today received information from the county that advised us that we have to put that out to bid. So, in effect, this item is moot today, and we will be bringing at next meeting an authorization to go out for public bid. Rick, is that?
That's absolutely true.
So, just one quick question. As I read this, the recommendation had been to purchase trailers, it would, it would be less expensive than to rent them for three or four years.
Yes, so, the county did advise us today that, that we would have to go out to public bid. And in doing so, we will do the two steps that we did in, in the analysis for lease versus purchase, so that we can, we can present the option of whether we buy or whether we lease. You're absolutely correct that a three-year lease is equivalent to the purchase of the, of the units, and therefore, years four and any, anything beyond that would be free to us, essentially. But next time, we will have the authorization to bid for the portable units.
Moving on into item N, IPRO, Annual ARCC Report, et cetera.
Introducing Crystal. The ARC report, actually, I asked Crystal to streamline this item, and so, we will be presenting the Edmaster Plan Degree and CTE Information in June, or at a later date, when we can do kind of an annual wrap-up, because there's some more crunching to do on that. But the ARC report is the accountability report for the California Community Colleges, and it is a law that each year, we present this report to you. And so, I'm grateful to Crystal for the work she's done on this, and she is going to present ARC.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. Board of Trustees, as usual, I'm delighted to present this report to you. I provided just a few slides tonight, just to make this as simple as possible, a little background information. This is the fifth year of the ARC report. There are eight performance measures, all of which are reported in percentages. And as Dr. Rocha just mentioned, it is legally required that I present it to you tonight, and then I will just report that back to the Chancellor's Office, that I did my job. First one I like to do is, I like to provide just a bit of context on all of the eight indicators, actually, and you're only going to see seven up here, because the eighth one is the non-credit indicator. What I put up here is how PCC looks compared to the state overall. So, the yellow column is PCC, and that lovely navy blue column is the state rate. And as you can see, in most cases, PCC is above the state rate on each of the indicators. The next slide is really ugly, but we like to give this to you. It is a comparison of PCC to local community college, single districts. I do give you this every year, and it's, it's cumbersome, but I know you'll all take it home tonight and read it carefully and get back to me. Nod, that's good, okay. And then, this one I gave to you for the first time last year, it actually breaks out the first indicator, which just talks about transfer, and our transfer relate to backglow at granting institutions. The first ARC indicator is called SPAR, and it actually includes just about everything that they could possibly throw in it, which is degrees, certificates, transfer, transfer-directed, transfer-prepared. But I know that the board likes to look at how we're doing transfer-wise, and I wanted to make sure I showed you this one. As you can see, in nine-ten, we just took a tad dip in our transfer percentage rate, and that was expected, because in the spring of 2010, the CSUs kind of stopped accepting transfers. We're not expecting that to happen this year, and we expect that to go back up. And I said, this was brief. So, if you have any questions, I'll entertain them.
Hello?
I have a question. So, in, in past years, the ARC data has been helpful in identifying some trends that we, things were doing well, but also, some areas in, in career and technical education where our performance hasn't. What, what are the lessons we've taken from this year's ARC report as trends to be proud of and trends to pay a little closer attention to?
Well, once again, our success rate, career and technical education has gone up, and we've worked very hard on that rate, and we've seen continuous improvement. We are also probably one of the best in the state in persistence, the fall-to-fall persistence of our students. We do very well in that every year, and we continue to do well. Once again, I would say that where we need to focus our attention is on the basic skills improvement rate. We are not where we need to be on that, and I think we have some really nice programs coming through, some acceleration programs, some module supplemental education programs that I think are going to help us address that.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Mann?
Yeah, I have a brief comment. I, I think that these numbers look very, very good. And if, as I'm sure the trustees know, this is on the, this is on the Chancellor's website, is that not correct? So, if you want to, you can, and you can see all of these numbers and as much. This is a very good summary of what's there. I am concerned, though, that if our vocational course completion is going up, we still, that's the only area where we have consistently been below the state rate, and also, we're a little bit below on the ESL improvement. So, this is the, did you say this is the fourth year for this data, fifth?
This is actually the fifth year, and one thing I've noticed over the last five years is that every year, the data gets better. And particularly with the ESL rate and the credit basic skills, I think we're going to see that even get better for us, because they've been doing some reworking of how we actually report that. It's a new data element that they've been really working hard on to kind of standardize it across the state. It wasn't before. So, one thing that I notice when I do it every year, particularly in that table I showed you, you would think that all I would have to do is add a new line and take out a line, but it's never like that. I actually have to go through and replace all the numbers, because from year to year, for every college, all the numbers change from the years before. So, I think that it's getting better. It's not perfect, but I do believe that they stay in the report this year. They expect by 2012, 2013 report, we'll see far more consistent numbers in basic skills improvement and ESL improvement.
Well, that's very, that's very good to know. I, I guess, my comment is, though, I, the first year it came out, then there's these different groups you're compared to, the first year, we were like the best in our group in almost everything, again, except vocational course completion. And even though we're improving, we're still, we're still low there. So, I, at some point, I'd like to have a report on what we're doing to get these, these numbers up. The other thing I would like to say, and this came out of the Students Success Task Force, it's just a discussion item, but it was at a public meeting, there is a proposal to have performance-based funding using the ARC measurements. So, it's extremely important, I think, that we really concentrate, as you say, in making sure that our numbers are the best possible, and identifying whatever we can do to get these, get these numbers up. Now, the existing proposal gives a phase-in time, and it may not be funded, but a lot of people were very receptive to that, because the data system is already in place, and people under, understand it. As long as it's kind of just a picture of what we're doing, I think it's, people are not really concerned about it. But if we suddenly have partial funding at risk, because these numbers are not moving one way or the other, then I think it becomes much more serious. So, I know you have, are doing everything you can to make sure we have the best possible numbers, but I would just like to encourage you to
Do better?
To do better. And I, and as I indicated, I would like to have a report sometime in the, in the future on, on what we're doing to continue improvement in vocational course and ESL. And finally, basic does not have a K on it? Sorry. What? I'll fix it. Okay.
Yes, in fact, you know, one of the things that Crystal is supervising now is a ramped-up program review. And of course, we now instituted the Institutional Effectiveness Committee, which is developing metrics for measuring exactly that, where we are and, you know, and where we're going. And we completely, you know, take in your comment, and you shall have that report in detail.
There's no action we're to take on this item.
No, just a, it's a, it's an informative, but it's required by legislation.
Okay.
Thanks, Crystal.
Item O, Instruction, Additions and Delays to the Credit Curriculum, Discussion of Possible Action.
This actually is a, it's an important item, but shouldn't be a controversial item. It comes from the, I think I saw Joe here about a day ago. Is Joe still here? Oh, there he is. And, well, Joe, if you, if you wouldn't mind taking half a second and just explaining this item, because it's, it's just courses, but it just gives us an opportunity to recognize you for the work that you're doing on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
May I just do a quick introduction, Dr. Rocha? There's, what's really important here is the, the Associate of Arts, Transfer and the Associate of Arts in Sciences degree that are tied to the SB 1440. And this is what both Mr. Futterner and Mr. Duran are going to speak to, and it's very, very exciting news, and it's been led by the Academic Senate, and that'll be there. That's a quick introduction.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Dr. Rocha, President Thomas, Thompson, and the members of the board here, and all visitors and attendees. This is a very exciting opportunity, and as Chair of Curriculum and Instruction here, Faculty Committee with the Academic Senate, I'm very pleased to introduce my colleague in the Division of Counseling Area, Armando Duran. And Armando had the responsibility and did the good work of shepherding forward, not one, not two, not three, but four, what are referred to as SB 1440 compliant degrees. Following in on what Crystal was presenting and what Dr. Mann was discussing about student success rates, I think this is directly linked to the Vision 90 Plan, having to do with improving transfer rates. The nutshell of it is, before taking any of your fire, is that what we have made is a fast track. We have made a clear plan for students, working with the Cal State system, working with faculty, with counseling, and now, there's an opportunity for them to present a degree that will be directly transferable to a number of our transfer institutions within the Cal State system. And I'm going to let Armando present the particulars of that SB 1440.
Thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. Again, we're very excited, for a simple reason, as a counselor especially, that these degrees will help students transfer in a more timely fashion. Currently, we have four. The first four that were proposed by the Chancellor's Office, our goal is to keep pace with the, with the Chancellor's Office. Currently, I believe four colleges have submitted their degrees, and we hope to be in the top percentile. That's a promise, we will be. The degrees are mathematics, communications, psychology, and sociology. As previously mentioned, these degrees are, will also provide guaranteed admissions to some of the local universities, CSUs. And just to give you a little background, the, it's a committee consisting of counselors, faculty, staff, we also, the articulation officer, and through the support of the CNI, the Academic Senate, so it's a collaborative effort. So, it's not just me putting these, these degrees together. So, our hope that, that we, again, continue to keep pace with the degrees that are being proposed by the Chancellor's Office, and bring them for, for approval.
Are there questions? Ms. Martin?
I'm really delighted with this. I have no questions on this, and I'm happy to support it, and I want to use the opportunity to put a bug in the committee's ear. Two things I've heard in the last few months. One is the number, one of the highest, if not the highest, transfer vocation or transfer emphasis is business. And if that's true, it seems like the faster we can get something in line for business, the more students we're helping sooner. So, I'm just putting the bug in your ear. Number two that I heard supporting that comment is that even in the 1440 alignment, where you, you are guaranteed a spot, you're not always guaranteed a spot in the business school or the business curriculum program of the Cal State that is legally has to accept you. And I'm not knowing, but surmising that if we had such an associate degree, that may help our business students get some of the coveted spots in, in the Cal States and other business schools that they're trying to transfer. So, I'm really, I know you got a lot of other competing interests, but I thought I got to use the opportunity to put a, the plug in for business.
These TMCs, Transfer Curricula Models, are being put forward by the Chancellor's Office, working with different faculties. So, they're still in the process of rolling these out. These were the first four that were developed. We already have Studio and Art History, for example, that's being put forward. It's being vetted right now.
So, I need to lobby Jeff over here.
That's right.
More than I need to lobby you, that maybe you could roll out business a little sooner.
So, this is, this is an ongoing activity.
All right, thank you.
And if I, if I may, just, I want to read a paragraph from a letter that was presented to the Chancellor's Office on the 13th of May. This is signed by Lawrence Pitts, who's the Provost and Executive Vice President of Academic Affairs, and by Daniel Simmons, who's the Head of the Academic Council for the University of California System. It's a key player who has not yet fully been moved into the 1440 compliant zone, but now, I'd like you to read this. "We would also like to take this opportunity to reiterate our support for the development of the Associate Degree Pathway. To the extent that students complete the TMC-based Associate Degrees, we anticipate better-prepared students applying to the university, especially in majors where some campuses do not currently demand lower-division major preparation as a requirement for admission. Furthermore, to the extent that new community college freshmen are unsure of the segment or campus in which they will transfer, the Associate Degree will provide an early and clear roadmap. While conversations are ongoing at the university, we anticipate that we will respond to ASB, Assembly Bill 2302, which was related to 1440, by identifying several areas where UC can guarantee eligibility for a comprehensive review of admission. As UC faculty committees do their work, we will continue to update you." So, this is a very positive development, and I think that we'll be able to see greater student success for transfer into degree programs without wasting our time and money, and their time and money.
Mr. Baum, then, Dr. Mann?
First, I'd like to move the approval of the, the curricular changes, and then, and --
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving, seconded?
And then, number two, just, I want to just reemphasize that this puts PCC at the head of the pack in the state. There's only maybe one other college that has actually moved so efficiently and effectively. College of the Desert, I believe, is--
We have the largest number.
Oh, we have the largest number?
We will have the largest number.
Yeah, they're evidently, most colleges are saying, we're going to do one and see what happens. Our goal is to get all four. Whatever the Chancellor's Office submitted, we--
Okay, I'll brag about it next time I'm at the Board of Governors' meeting, but this puts us really at the head of the pack, and it, and it's, it's going to be such a great service to students, because they will be guaranteed. Our challenge now is going to be-- Our challenge now is going to be making sure the CSUs live up to their commitment because a lot of them are saying, communicate, you know, we're impacted in certain programs so that even though we have the students who've done everything they need to do, there, there are some challenges in ensuring that they have the spots to transfer into. And, and so, and there's several CSUs that say they're impacted in all, all fields, including the ones that are mentioned here. So if you want to go to Cal State Fullerton, or Cal State, San Diego State, or others, it will be a, it's going to take an additional push forward to make sure our students can use this to do that.
And if I can just add to that, that this is, this is truly an ongoing articulation game. We're really pushing forward on this, and we're seeing where campuses are adopting it, what changes can be made in the future. So this is a dynamic process and not simply a static set of degrees that we'll be offering.
Absolutely.
Dr. Mann, then Ms. Martinez.
Yes, I have a question about, it doesn't have to do with the transfer curriculum. It's about one of the other curricular changes. Do you want to wait until that's done? But I certainly want to raise a question before we vote on it. Or should I go ahead?
Go ahead, Mann, raise the question.
Okay. We are deleting the program in performing and communication arts, television, radio, television operations, technology. How does this affect the interns that we have at KPCC? It says that this, there's no longer any entry-level jobs in this field, but as my understanding, we have 12, 14, 16 interns, and they do work in technical radio. Are we cutting off our nose here?
I don't know if Dr. Einhorn is here, but if not, I can respond to that if you'd like. The, what they've done is, through the CNI process, they've gone back and they've deleted this program, and they've, they've modified other existing programs in order to provide for the needs of the students, which include the internships that you're talking about, Dr. Mann.
All right, as long, as long as we aren't, you know, losing those interns.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
I just wanted to let you know that from the perspective of the, of the Academic Senate, we really appreciate the work that Joe Futterner has done as Chair of the CNI Committee, and that Armando has done as the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on the Student Transfer Reform Act. These are just, as, as you pointed out, the first four degrees. Business is in the works, and this has been a long process over the course of the year, and I just wanted to acknowledge their hard work.
Good, thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this. Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to Information Technology, item P.
Okay, we'll call Bob and Justin up. This is a very, very brief report. You now, no, Justin. Justin Suie, who is our IT Project Management Leader. They've been deep into the agenda for upgrading IT vis-a-vis the deliverable sheet that was presented to you some time ago, actually, two months ago, and they've been at work. And I asked them to, very, very briefly, since we started the summer registration period, and we'll be heading into the fall registration period, to give you an update, which goes to the idea that it's, it's working.
All right, well, listen, it'll be very short because the computer just went down for some reason. But what I would do is, I will, yeah, yeah. I will, just draw, I will bring to the board's attention two things. In your packets, you have a stapled group of papers, which includes a two-page report in terms of where we are right now. It includes a list of our certification stakeholders, a checklist in terms of our certification checklist that we've used for the summer registration process, and using that as we go forward in the fall, and then the May 12th version of the, of the IT Project Tracker. In the PowerPoint presentation that you are looking at, it's very short, I'll just briefly say that the project leaders are the folks that are, that are mentioned there. This continues to be the group that is leading this, assisted by our consultant, Justin Choi. And I also wanted to add the certification stakeholder group because they are actively engaged in everything that is happening. From a progress-to-date point of view, our project tracker ebbs and flows. Currently, we're at 53 projects of different things that are being worked on. We have developed the certification process. We have this thing called conference room pilots, where we are actually bringing all of the processes into a, a conference room or a piloted place where both the end-users and our technicians work side by side. We have a new pre-production proof of, proof of design and concept. Justin wanted me to point out very specifically that the long-awaited rollout of Schedule 25 and Resource 25 in terms of the use of our facilities is finally now on the docket to be rolled out in August. That's been like a five-year process that we're working on. We're, and then we're rewriting a number of existing online faculty services and prototypes and what have you as we go forward here. Also, very important, we've merged our MIS and Instructional Computing Operations under a single information technology arm. We've relocated all of those personnel and facilities to the library building, or LL building, and we now have a much greater college commitment and resolve to improving all of our MIS and academic computing services. As we go forward into the future, we have several opportunities and challenges. We're going to work hard to sustain all these improvements. We're going to refine the processes that we've developed thus far. We are going to remind ourselves and bear in mind that this is a legacy system that was developed in 1982, and therefore, there's only so much that we can do with the technology before we move forward into a new enterprise resource plan. We have to recognize that there's been multiple developers over the years that have worked on all these things, 70-plus what we call bolt-ons onto this system. So my point is, it's incredibly complex. It's not necessarily easy. I've learned a great deal in the last eight weeks as I've been heavily engaged in this process. Finally, our business process revision and implementation teams, we are creating those teams, we are building those teams in preparation for a new enterprise resource plan. It's a, it's a very integral part of who we are and what we are as we move forward into our new technology future. And all this is about delivering to the new VP of Information Technology a working information technology infrastructure for the 2011, 2012 period. So he or she has the time to really begin to explore what the best enterprise resource planning process is for us and to move forward. And then, of course, all this in support of a technology master plan that will support the EMP. So quickly, summer registration, going very well, having a few bugs, but for the most part, going well. We are working towards a smoother fall registration, trouble-free registration, and you can read some of the other items there in terms of some of the key processes that we are working on. And so I guess the bottom line to all this is that the technology is as ready as it possibly can be under the circumstances of 1982 technology and, and developers who've worked on it over the years. And we will experience these challenges going forward, there's absolutely no doubt about that, but unequivocally, we are in the best position that we have been in a long time in support of technology on this campus, and that's with great thanks to the Board of Trustees and Dr. Rocha for your combined leadership.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. There's no action we're required to take on this. Well, thank you, is there?
No, just wanted to, you know, update you and make sure that you knew that we were putting Justin to good use. I would just ask Justin to just say a word or two to the trustees. Justin, today's, what is it, May 18th? What is in place in May 18th? What is different and better in, according to your assessment, that didn't exist two months ago when you started this project?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak, trustees and every attendees. I think from our perspective for the last two we, two months, Bob has pointed out a lot of things we have achieved, but really, the bottom line on all these activities is building a foundation, strengthening the foundations, and have the campus involved and integrated with the MIS team, both feeding the requirements and as well as getting the feedbacks. I think that level of communication and integrated working as a team, I see a lot of people here that has contributed to the process, Crystal, Cynthia, Dave, still has been a very integral part of these testing inputs, submission of issues. I think it's a campus-wide effort. It's a very focused and target effort, and also kind of we bind the MIS into a responsibility to kind of turn around and provide whatever that's necessary on it. And I think Crystal's reports indicates how important data is to run an organization like these, and I think only when the MIS is, have a strong foundation and it can have a process that have a, a fluid process that everybody can work together, build the requirements, help them prioritize their precious resources, I think that's where we can generate the greatest results for the campus.
And if I, if I can just add very quickly, Justin has been amazing to work with. He has really helped us quite a bit, so it was an excellent choice.
Good. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to item Q. Adopt Resolution Number 473 for method of payment and word limitation for candidate statements; Discussion of Possible Action.
I'd like to move-
The resolution speaks for itself?
Motion, I'd like to move Resolution 473, which provides a 200-word limit and that the candidate pays for it. Kimmerholtz, tell.
Moved and seconded.
Any discussion on this item? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We've done item R. We're now on then to item S. Public hearing regarding initial bargaining proposal for 2010, 2011 from the passing of City College Police Officer Association, the passing of the County Community College District. This is the hearing. It's therefore now open. Anybody wishing to address the board with respect to this matter? Not appearing. We'll have to declare the hearing closed. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so we're now on to item T on the agenda. Associates Community College Trustees nomination of Kathy Wei for a Faculty Award; Discussion of Possible Action. Someone want to make the presentation on this so we have a little bit of background?
Yes, for this, I would ask Trustee Wah to, you know, present the item, and she was very, very helpful in getting this, and then, of course, Dean Young, Ted's out there. I don't know, I don't think Kathy's here, but Kathy's in Ted's division, and he's been on top of this.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. When we were back in Washington, I had a chance to attend the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, and, and they mentioned the awards that they have for ACCT, but one of the things that they said was they don't get, they rarely get nominations for any Asian Pacific Islander. So what I did was, we had a nation, the President's Asian Advisory Committee, and so I presented it to, to them, and then I turned it over to the Asian American faculty here at PCC, the faculty and staff, and they unanimously nominated Kathy, Dr. Kathy Wei, for this, this honor, and they wanted to keep it a secret from her until after tonight, you know, for, hoping for a good result here, but it did leak out. But a lot of the information they got had to be gotten under the covers, and it was really hard, and in the end, we found out that she thought we're asking all these questions because she thought we're trying to get rid of her program. But, but I want to point out a few things. I have worked with Kathy quite a lot and on community issues, and she's very well-known in the Chinese-American community for her work with the Mandarin language programs, and she's been very instrumental in involving the community and furthering the language learning of Mandarin here in PCC. And one of the things, a couple of things, she's, she's kind of put PCC on the map in that we are, I believe, the only community college that has an HSK certification, which is the Certification of Fluency for the Mandarin Language. So we are an HSK testing site because of Dr. Wei's efforts. And as I was going through her biography, two things were, well, one of the things that was really most, I think, really impressive to me was the outcome of alumni from PCC who, because of taking Mandarin language under Dr. Wei's program, went on to become very influential business people in, working in the Chinese community. So one, actually, working in mainland China, and he's an Anglo-American, but he learned Chinese, and another is an African-American student who went on to become a very successful businessman here in Pasadena, and actually is working on the foundation with Dr. Sugimoto. But I wanted to see if Dr. Young, who is Kathy Wei's dean, wanted to come up and add some things, since he was very instrumental in providing information.
And then, as Ted is coming to the podium, of course, I strongly support this, and Ted and Kathy have been really at the heart of an effort on moving us forward as a truly global community college. Have been working on the new study abroad programs, ESL programs in, in China, so it's a, you know, it's a, it's a well-deserved nomination, Ted.
Well, I will be very brief and simply say that Kathy Wei is an extraordinary person in terms of, as an educator and as a leader for her program. She has put us on the map. We have an incredibly good reputation among the Chinese community in Southern California. She sees to it that we get publicity for, in the Chinese media. There have been numerous times that they've had reporters coming on our campus because of the state of our program. It also relates to our F1 visa students, our international students. We have a lot coming from China, in part because of the great reputation that we have, and that comes back to all the PR that she does. Besides that, she seems to do the job about five different people all at once, and I always say she just makes me look good because she has all these new proposals and new ideas, and they all seem to be pretty wonderful.
Well, I think it's very timely that we do this, too. When we were back in Washington, Linda Wong and I attended a program on the State Department where they were promoting an exchange of students between the United States and, and China. So this is a very timely recommendation, I think, so. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
With enthusiasm, right?
With great enthusiasm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments or? Mr. Pack?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I add just one more thing? Because of Dr. Wei, there's all, there's, PCC is going to host an event on calligraphy and Tai Chi on Wednesday in the quad, next Wednesday in the quad at 12 o'clock. So we're sending that information out to the community, and I hope everyone enthusiastically supports that.
Okay. We now are on to future board meeting dates. Wednesday, June the 1st, regular meeting at 7 o'clock, closed session beginning at 5:30. Wednesday, June 15th, we've listed a study session, but it may be a combination study session and some action at 6:00 PM. Where is that one going to be?
Here.
Okay.
Here, right? Yeah, here.
Okay. Now, future agenda items, I think Dr. Mann had one.
Yes, I would like to put on AB 684 as a future agenda item. Briefly, this is legislation that was sponsored by the Community College League, and it's being carried by a former St. Agar trustee. What it would do is, the California Voting Right Act requires that if members are elected at large, that they're, that they be able to prove that they are not disenfranchising any community. And it, I think the feeling is that almost all the districts that elect at large are going to have to go to what they call wards, where they are likely to just represent a part of that. This election, if, and, there's a prior law that says that in order to change the, from an at-large to a trustee area election, you have to have a, it has to be approved by the voters. This legislation would provide that the local boards could switch from an at-large to a trustee area election, or could change their number of trustees by requesting permission from the Board of Governors, and the Board of Governors then could approve it. This, if this passes, this will literally save millions of dollars when you realize there are 73 districts, and I think the majority of them do not have election by trustee area elections. So I would like to put it on the agenda so we can discuss it and maybe take a position supporting it. supporting it, because although it does not affect us directly, it does affect districts up and down the state. And Mr. Martin was at the redistricting session at the CCCT conference. Do you have anything you want to add now?
Well, I think I agree that it does make it definitely more efficient and a more appropriate method than what is being used currently.
Okay, that'll be on the future agenda soon.
Yeah, and the sooner we get this one on, the better, because what they're asking for is letters of support.
Other future agenda items? Anything else to be brought up? Then we are adjourned.